You are live.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Good evening and welcome to a virtual meeting of the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission. This is our last virtual meeting of the commission. So, beginning in June, excuse me, beginning in July, the commission will resume in-person meetings. Over the last year, we greatly appreciated the Ohio Legislature's actions to address the pandemic, including the ability for public entities to conduct virtual meetings. Tonight, you can access the meeting via the live stream on the city's website. We welcome your comments on cases. In order to submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form under the streaming video on the city's website. Your questions and comments will be relayed to the commission by the meeting moderator. Please provide a valid name and address when submitting your comments and refrain from making any inappropriate comments. We want to accommodate public participation and comments to the greatest extent possible. And Mr. Grimes has been kind enough to accept an assignment to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So I invite all of you to turn your audio and your video off. Mr. Grimes will leave his audio on and we can join him in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. And Mr. Way is excused this evening. Ms. Beal, will you please call roll?
Yes, Mr. Schneer.
Hey, yes.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Fishman?
Here.
Ms. Call?
Here.
Mr. Supalak?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to accept the documents into record and approve the minutes for the meetings held May the 6th and May the 20th. I assume everyone has had the opportunity to review those documents. I have a motion for Mr. Fishman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Beal.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Thank you again, Ms. Beal. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board to city council when rezoning and plating of property are under consideration. In such cases, city council will receive recommendations from the commission. In other cases, the commission has the final decision-making responsibility. Anyone who intends to address the commission on any of these administrative cases must be sworn in. The agenda order is typically determined at the beginning of the meeting by the chair. The rules and regulations of the Planning and Zoning Commission state that no new agenda items are to be introduced after 10:30 p.m. There is a single case eligible for the consent agenda this evening. It is case number six, Drake Dance Academy at 6419 Old Avery Road, case 21-083 CU Conditional Use. Is there anyone who would like to pull the case from the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none. And Mr. Boggs, as we have a consent agenda item, would you like us to? Well, first, I'll ask for any public comment. Staff, any public comment on the Drake Dance Studio?
We have no public comment on this application. And Jesse Shamp is joining us this evening in lieu of Mr. Boggs.
Got it. Oh. I could have sworn I saw that name up there. So hello and welcome. It's nice to see you again.
Good evening.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the conditional use.
Move.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Ms. Beal?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Anyone who attends to address the commission on any cases this evening, please turn your video on. And Ms. Martin, Ms. Noble, and Ms. Roush, I'll look to you to make sure that we have everyone here who needs to be here.
Yes.
Thank you. If each of you could raise your right hand and answer in the affirmative, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony to this commission?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're looking at the first item here is reconsideration of Heartland Bank at 6500 France Road. This is the final development plan, case 20-207 FDP. This application is a request for the determination on reconsideration of the final development plan for exterior modifications and associated site improvements for an existing bank on an approximately 0.82 acre site zoned Bridge Street District commercial. The site is southeast of the intersection of West Bridge Street and France Road. And Mr. Ridge, it looks like you are our presenter this evening. Welcome.
Great. Yeah, thank you. So as was mentioned, this is a request for review and approval of a final development plan for exterior and site modifications for the Heartland Bank location in the Bridge Street District. The site is highlighted in yellow on your screen. It is located southeast of the intersection of France Road with West Bridge Street and serves as an out parcel to the larger Dublin Plaza Shopping Center. A bit of history, as this has been before, the commission several times before. In July of 2020, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed and approved a concept plan for a number of exterior modifications and building modifications. In October of 2020, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed and approved a preliminary development plan with three waivers and four conditions. So those conditions really required that the applicant continue to work with staff on a number of planning and engineering items. In January of this year, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed and approved a master sign plan and plan for the site, but disapproved the final development plan that was heard at the same time. The commission, while largely supportive of the final development plan, remained concerned with the proposed building material at the time. Subsequent to the disapproval of the final development plan, the applicant did request reconsideration for the final development plan in February of 2021, and the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed and approved that reconsideration request. In more detail, as I had mentioned, there were a number of waivers approved at the preliminary development plan stage of review. And so those are listed on your screen here. The first one was to allow a reduction in the percentage of primary materials on each elevation. And so that waiver was approved in conjunction with the condition that the applicant continue to work with staff to select an appropriate exterior cladding material. Approval of that waiver really facilitated and informed the design moving forward, including what you're about to see tonight. The second request was to allow for a minimum transparency calculation that is below the code-required percentage. And really, this is due in part to the fact that this is an existing building. And without complete demolition and reconstruction, the applicant was limited in the scope of modifications they could make. And then additionally, the third request was for a parapet height of approximately 12 feet 2 inches, which is slightly taller than what code permits, but allowed for adequate concealment of the existing roofing structure. Additionally, as I had mentioned, the applicant did receive approval of a reconsideration request for the final development plan. And with that, the applicant committed to a number of actions moving forward. So those are listed on your screen here. And the first one being that the applicant would provide a large mock-up of the preferred material, you know, whatever that would have ended up being at the time, as well as smaller sections of lesser preferred alternatives. So as you're aware, there is a large-scale mock-up installed on a site for review. It's important to note here that the applicant was advised by staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission to not provide materials that they were not willing to use at the end of the day. So after further research, the applicant team dropped the previously proposed Tresspa material from consideration, and ultimately, the team landed on a single item, which is the for you today. In addition to also providing a new renderings per material, the applicant committed to providing additional technical durability and insulation details. So in your packet was included a catalog on the ProDima material, which outlines general finishing details, installation projects in the U.S. and abroad, and general information about the product. Also provided was a technical specification sheet. And so that outlined details about items such as the freeze fall cycle, how that impacts the material, general weathering details, fire rating, items like that. And then also, the applicant provided an installation guideline from the manufacturer, which outlines the concealed slat system. In addition to these items, the applicant did visit a local installation at the Cincinnati Children's Hospital, which at this point is a little over 12 years old and appeared to be in good condition. So understanding that the exterior cladding material may be the primary topic of discussion this evening, I did want to take a step back and just remind the Planning and Zoning Commission members that the final development plan stage of review is the final stage of review for this project in particular. And the following items are also up for approval. That includes site layout and any site modifications, the landscape plan, and then building modifications as well. That said, these are largely unchanged from the previous iteration. So just to refresh your memory, these are some photos to give some context of the existing conditions of the site. So on the left-hand side are the south and east elevations. And then on the right-hand side of your screen is the drive-through overhang, which is located closer to West Bridge Street. And so what you see here are the existing and proposed site plans existing on the left and proposed on the right. I'll outline a number of modifications here. However, in general, the site is largely to remain the same as it exists today. So the building is to remain centrally located on the site. The applicant is removing several parking spaces from the northern portion of the site. And additionally, is removing pavement in the northeast corner of the site, where the dumpster is currently being held. And so that'll be removed and landscaped. And the proposed landscape plan, again, has not changed significantly from the most recent iteration of this. You'll notice increased landscaping in the northwest and southwest corners of the site. The applicant is also proposing a bricklayer patio in the main entryway area with a stone seat wall and a couple benches as well. And then additionally, the applicant is proposing increased landscaping around the utility structure in the rear of the building at the request of staff. So on the right-hand side of your screen, you'll see a list of the proposed building modifications. In short, these include a new metal material, essentially making up the parapet. Of course, the ProDima Prodex exterior cladding material, which is the wood-looking material on your screen here. The existing brick will be painted a dark gray color to complement the more contemporary design. And the applicant has also slightly increased transparency from its current state. Additionally, you'll notice the steel supports on this rendering. So these are to replace the existing white support beams. In more detail, the proposed cladding material, again, is called ProDima Prodex. And the particular finish that the applicant has selected is called a rustic. So it is a wood-based product, although consists of other synthetic materials to protect from sunlight, salt, chemicals such as spray paint, as well as general water and weathering over time. According to the catalog, it is installed in a variety of climates similar to our own, but also more extreme than our own as well. The applicant has selected a warmer finish to integrate better with the surroundings and will be utilizing a concealed fastener system. So with the installation of the mock-up, there are a number of differences between how that was installed and how the product would be installed on a larger scale across the whole building. The applicant did provide a memo outlining some of those differences. And additionally, is in attendance this evening to speak to those as well. And staff's review has determined that the material is a high-quality material for which staff is supportive of. In addition to the high-quality look that this provides, the warmer tone and the unique wood grain look, the technical data provided also indicated that it's durable and low maintenance. And additionally, its installation on some high-profile buildings in the U.S. and abroad provided additional confidence that this product could be appropriate in this location as well. That said, staff does recognize that the mock-up installation did not meet the expectations we had hoped for necessarily. But we further recognize that this product, as with any product, you know, could... And so staff is recommending four conditions of approval this evening, essentially getting at any installation concerns that we have. Additionally, staff tasked a third-party consultant and architect with reviewing the material. So that was provided to you all as well. And the architect provided specifications on its performance, but additionally highlighted a few concerns, which largely align with staffs as well. And finally, this is just a bigger view of the proposed character image from two slides previous to this one. And this was reviewed against all applicable criteria. And staff's recommendation, this is this evening, is for approval of the final development plan with four conditions. So quickly going through those, the first is that the applicant submitted qualifications of the exterior material installer prior to that material being installed. And really, again, that's to ensure that a qualified installer with experience with the material is leading the charge to install this material. Number two, that the proposed exterior materials be installed in accordance with the manufacturer's specifications. So again, those were provided by the applicant for your consideration and review. And it would be a concealed slat system. Number three, that the applicant schedules zoning inspection upon completion of 10% of the installation. So this really provides the city with an opportunity, kind of a checkpoint opportunity, to see, you know, to ensure that installation methods are being followed and that the product is turning out as we would expect. And then finally, the fourth condition is that the material be maintained in good condition and that the owner repair the material as needed at the determination of and to the satisfaction of the city for the lifespan of the exterior cladding material. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have. I'd ask that you defer any technical questions regarding the material to the applicant, who is also in attendance this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridge. Looking to the commission, do you have any questions for Mr. Ridge at this time? Ms. Fox?
I do. You know, you mentioned the third party. Was that put in our OneDrive? I do not see it in mine.
It was emailed to you all. Nikki, are you able to confirm if that also made it into the OneDrive?
I don't believe it's in OneDrive.
Okay.
Is there a way to place it in OneDrive, right?
Yes, I can do that right now.
All right. I do have another question for you, Chase. Is our zoning inspector familiar with this installation? That this kind of installation? So if you have a zoning inspector, take a look at this. Would he know what he was supposed to be looking for? If we've not ever used this in the city before?
Yeah, that's a good question. The zoning inspector may not be familiar with this particular product. We have seen synthetic wood materials installed elsewhere. So they do have experience with similar materials, but not this one in particular.
Okay. And then what was that? You said that there was an increase in the level of, in the percentage of transparency. It was, we require 65% on street side and 50% on non-street side. Could you tell me what those percentages now are?
I would have to go back and look. I apologize. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head here.
You can let me know during the course of this conversation. Okay, that's all I have right now.
And it does look like that email just came in today at about 3 o'clock, about 2 o'clock in the afternoon. So Nikki, if someone would, I think that the three concerns ought to be part of the record. I don't know if we want to read those in or if we'd like to just append them to the meeting for the people participating. I think it might be valuable to hear that information.
I'm sorry. I don't know what you're referring to.
Can you, can Chase read the three recommendations from a third-party consultant?
Okay.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to do that. So recommendation number one, the product warranty is only 10 years, which is the life, which is the life of a building, is a very short time. My concern would be for the potential discoloring or fading of the product after that timeframe with no recourse for correction. I have observed the installation of other installations of similar wood veneer laminated panel products. In time, when exposed to sunlight, water, and pollution, the edges of these panels had discolored with the acrylic finish, and the acrylic finish had faded. Number two refers to exposed fasteners. As noted above, one of the two methods of attachment is an exposed fastener with a plastic cap. These caps will be visible. In addition, the caps may become dislodged and/or fall off, and the screw fastener would be exposed. It is my understanding that the concealed fastener system is to be used for this project and should be a condition of approval for this material. And number three, as with most thin veneer or laminate products, the true key to a successful installation is the quality of the workmanship during the installation and final detailing of the product. The manufacturer has provided specific information and instructions for the handling, storage, cutting, attachment, and cleaning of this product. The contractor will need to closely adhere to these instructions and use the proper tools for installation. If not cut properly, the edges of this material will be rough and will expose the laminated layers of materials. If not properly secured with the fasteners under-tightened, overtightened, or not located in a consistent dimensional relationship to the edges of the panels, the visual quality overall installation will be unacceptable. So those were the three final comments.
Mr. Schneer? You're muted.
I'm sorry. The timing of the receipt of this report this afternoon followed the planning report. So did the staff take this in consideration? With this, is the staff's recommendation still the same? And do you want to change any conditions? Or you took this into account? Just can you walk us through that timing?
Yes, certainly. So we had been in conversation with the reviewer prior to the memo being finalized. So our conditions do largely align with his concerns as well and address those concerns. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fox, was there still an outstanding question that you had? Percentage of coverage or something of that nature?
Just percentage of transparency that was altered, that's all.
Ms. Fox, I apologize. I'm not signing this off the top of my head here. But what I do know is that the applicant is increasing transparency from the state of how it exists today. So it is coming closer to compliance, not further away, if that helps.
Do you know what the original transparency? I know we're supposed to have 65%, you said, on the street. Do you know what the original transparency was? How far off we were from the 65? Without...
What was that last part? I apologize.
Say, I could go back to the history, but I don't know that it's appropriate for the moment to do that.
I don't recall that exact number. I apologize.
Okay.
Any further questions for staff from the commission at this time? All right. We'd like to invite the applicant. Is the applicant here? Is there someone who would like to make a statement to the commission?
Hello. Thank you, guys. We're glad to be back again. Really quickly, I'll just take the opportunity to introduce everyone on the call in case there are questions later. So I'm Ashley Trout. I represent Heartland Bank. I also have Rex Taylorling and John Goldstock from Moody Nolan Architects, as well as Rob Minshall from Russili Construction. Since the time of the final development plan, as we met in January, we have been working towards addressing the remaining concerns of the commission, specifically on the issue of this synthetic material. We first presented the concept plan back in July of 2020. It had actually been in front of the city prior to that, but that was the first time this commission had had the opportunity to weigh in. And since that time, we have received support and encouragement on the overall design, including the wood aesthetic. Also, since the conceptual plan, we have not been proposing to use natural wood due to concerns over the longevity and the wear, the maintenance to that. It is demonstrated on a much smaller scale throughout the city and smaller projects. And so since the beginning, we have always been proposing some sense of a synthetic wood material. During that last final development plan, we were proposing the Tresspa product, and we received some comments regarding the warmth of that product, as well as concerns over the look and feel. Would it appear natural? Would it appear plastic? Following that final development plan and kind of at the recommendation of this commission, we continue to look into products, including the ProDima Prodex product, which, once we got that material and started to investigate, it really is very similar in terms of it's a phenolic resin as the Tresspa. However, it really stood out to us because the wood look is achieved through a natural wood veneer. Each plank is unique and the wood grain is true, but it's still got that durability that we like in the Tresspa product. By going with the ProDima, we're also able to, we open up into other color selections. So that rustic color that we're showing now and proposing is a little bit warmer. We think it looks really good, very happy with the way the material looks. As Chase stated in our request for reconsideration, we discussed the mock wall. And originally, we had planned to do multiple materials. As you stated, you know, under his advisement, we should only present the materials which we would consider using. We took that advice, and it was down to the Tresspa and the ProDima. They are essentially, you know, the same kind of product. This is really more... They are essentially, you know, the same kind of product. This is really more of like a brand change. And we did feel that the ProDema product offered and resolved those concerns regarding the quality, the natural look and feel, and ultimately, we chose to move forward with that. We know that seeing an actual product in person is important. That's important to us. We know it's important to you. There isn't something that I can point to in Dublin, so we looked beyond the state, into the state of Ohio. In that memo, I listed out several locations, but the one that was most interesting to me was at Cincinnati Children's Hospital because it was installed 12-plus years ago. We went down to that site and inspected that facility. They used it on a rather large scale. The color remained intact. It was in very good condition. We were very pleased with what we saw. That was what we were hoping for in this product. When it comes to the mock wall, we share the same concerns that Chase did. Ultimately, we had planned to do it as realistic to the final installation as we could. But with this product coming from Spain and constraints around getting limited quantities of the material and the concealed fastener system, we did have to make some modifications in order to get this mock wall in front of you. And we've provided some additional details and hope that we can address those concerns for you. But wanted to just kind of remind everyone, because hopefully you have all been out to the site and been able to see that mock wall. The first thing that I want to draw to your attention is there will be a concealed fastener system. The nail heads that you saw, the way it was installed, is not representative of what we will do in the actual application. It will be installed using that concealed fastener system, which was found on page 20 through 26 of the technical specifications that I provided along with the memo. One other nuance to that mock wall has to do with the material itself. So when we order this product, in the quantity that we need it for, it will arrive as pre-cut planks with a tongue and groove joint along the long edge. We were unable to get those boards pre-cut in a, in a quantity of this size. We were able to get the sheets of the same product. So the material that you're seeing, the color, the grain, that is the product. However, we did have to field cut into planks. So in the true application, you'll see that tongue and groove joint along the long edges. We will not be cutting that product nearly as much as we had to do for the purpose of this mock wall. The detail of the tongue and groove can be found on page 21 of the technical guide provided. And then the third item really relates to the installation. When we get to the true application, we will have a skilled, certified, finished carpenter doing this work. Most of you know what's going on in construction today, and the availability of getting the folks that we wanted in the time for a product of this size was just not feasible. But we understand the importance of installation on this product. And we, we hope that between the memo, the third-party opinion that the city provided, and the conditions that staff is recommending that we are very agreeable to, this will help provide the commission with the same level of confidence in the use of this product that we're proposing today. With this project, we really desire to set the tone of revitalization for the plaza which serves as a gateway to the Dublin community. We hope that we have shown our commitment and willingness to be a true community partner by accommodating and improving upon nearly all the requests regarding landscaping, parking, dumpster enclosure, color selections, and transparency issues. We're committed to investing in Dublin, and rest assured that we have a vested interest in making sure that this building is of the highest quality and presents our company in the positive light the most possible way to the Dublin community. We understand and respect the commission's careful consideration of this product selection up to this point. We believe that the four conditions that staff has proposed will ensure the highest quality installation and should give you the assurance and confidence that you're requesting. This section of the city of Dublin is long overdue for revitalization, and we hope that you will allow us to, to start that process and set the tone for this corridor by approving this final development plan tonight. Ultimately, our goal is the same as yours, to provide the community with a high-quality building designed to stand the test of time. I want to thank you guys again for hearing this one more time. It's been a long road. And with that, thank you, and we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Trout. Looking to the commission, do you have questions for the applicant? Jane, I might parrot back. Ms. Trout, do you have the percentage transparency on the basins of the building?
I was looking for that as Chase was presenting. I have all of the records up, and I'm searching for that now. If you give me a second, I will try to get that for you.
Thank you, Ms. Trout. And Ms. Fox, I did peruse the history when we saw it in January, when we saw it in February, and nowhere do I actually see a percentage actually reported in our meeting minutes, nor the actual planning reports. So I tried to. Looking back to the commission, any questions beyond what we have from Ms. Trout already? Mr. Supalack?
I'm looking for, let's see, the architect. I guess I'm not sure. Moody Nolan.
Is that Mr. Minchell? Is, is that Ms. Trout?
That would be Rex Hagerling.
Rex, can you hear me? Perfect. So how about this? We, we all agree the, the mock-up, from a distance, it looks great. The ProDema, I think, you know, in their examples and their catalog really comes across as real wood, which is impressive in this, in this space and on the bell curve of products is, is out there. There's obviously a good number of details that need to be improved with the installation. I see in your, your wall, your wall sections, a number of references. The thing I don't really see in your reference or the ProDema reference is the outside corner situation, which I'm just guessing it's going to be a mitered kind of end. Can you help me understand that? You're muted.
Mr. Hagerling, you're, you're still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. We considered mitering the corners, but decided that it was going to create a situation that was going to be perhaps a little sharp and then prone to getting chipped or damaged. So the corners, the corners that we're proposing are simply kind of butting the two corners together, and this is what ProDema recommends. There needs to be a slight gap at the end, at the corner to allow for expansion and contraction. Here, this gets back to the, the skill of the installers. The wood needs to be cut very precisely and installed very precisely, which, you know, which will admit you're not seeing on the mock-up close up.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
A follow-up question to that. Can you tell me the finish of the exposed corners? As I imagine, we're, we're abutting those at a 90-degree angle because we are not mitering. While the immediate edge, the 90 degree from the front plane, may also have some type of laminate texture because of the gap, there may be some visibility on the edge that is not the longer of the two, if you understand what I'm, I'm trying to illustrate. So if I have two corners and I'm abutting them like this, I imagine that the top one that overhangs slightly would have some type of edging here. But with the gap, this edge would also be visible?
Yes, there will be, there will be an exposed edge. We can, again, we've considered, in some cases, sometimes, you know, metal corners are put on, on these kinds of installations. And we, we decided to let the corner be what it is. It needs to be done very precisely, and when you cut, when you expose the edge, you're not really exposing laminate. I mean, not exposing layers of things. You're exposing a solid material. It, if it's, if it's cut properly, it will look very consistent. And we think adding some kind of trim piece to the corner only actually detracts from it. And I, and we can point to several, we can point to other, other ProDema installations on some very prominent buildings that have corners done, done just like this.
There's a number of, of them shown in the catalog example.
Looking back to the commission for questions at this point, Ms. Fox?
Ms. Trout said in one of our earlier meetings, especially during the reconsideration, that the Trespa was the only appropriate material, and now it is not the appropriate material. Why did you decide it wasn't appropriate?
So we were unaware at the time of the ProDema option. And as I stated, essentially, this product is very similar to the Trespa product in, in what it is. This is a little bit of a, kind of a brand shift. When we're looking at comparing the two, we kind of felt because they are essentially the same product of two different brands, but we felt and believed that the ProDema solved for the concerns regarding the natural wood look, that putting them up against each other really didn't make sense. If we weren't going to get the ProDema approved, there was probably no way we were going to get the Trespa approved, because when you set them next to each other, it was clear that the ProDema was the better option to solve for the concerns.
And also, one of the requests during reconsideration was to consider, I think Ms. Call said, to look at reducing the amount of the secondary material so that you met, so we did not have such a large facade of secondary material. Did you discuss that at all?
We've discussed that from the beginning. However, it is pared back as much as we can in order to achieve the aesthetic of this remodel. To reduce it anymore would change the design entirely, and we'd basically be scrapping the whole thing.
Okay. Do you normally, this 10-year warranty is a concern. So durability was one of our questions. Do you normally recommend, when you design a building, to only design it with a material that would only have a 10-year warranty? Is that, is that common?
So it's not common. I don't think that was, you know, if we were starting from scratch, would we be doing it that way? Potentially not. However, you know, in this city area, we're working with an existing structure, and we're really trying to give it a, a modernization and baseless. And we worked for two years through multiple concepts on what could be done aside from completely demolishing the building and, and starting from scratch. And we really liked the design concept. The city was very, very much supportive of it. So 10-year warranty, you know, would it give us cause for concern if we were building our building out of it and the entire facade was clad of that? Yes. However, this is really just a veneer around the building. The building itself, itself is still brick. It is still glass. We are just using this material to help us give it a different look and feel, given the constraints of the existing roof line and things of that nature. And we, we feel like the, the conditions that staff is recommending are more than fair. And, you know, our commitment is to, to keep it up to the best standards as well.
All right, thank you.
Looking back to the commission, any other questions at this time? Any final questions for staff before we enter into deliberation? All right. Staff, has any public comments been received on this item?
We've not received any public comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ridge. With that, I will close the discussion, the question and answer session, and go into deliberation. Mr. Grimes, would you like to start us off?
Yes, thank you. I'm impressed with the material, and I'm impressed with the thought, and I appreciate the long patience that you've had in, in working on this over the last couple of years. I, I, I looked at the product in place, and I think that it's going to look rather impressive. And as mentioned about this children's hospital, 12 years, it still looks great. I, I don't think that 10 years is, you know, it's just what they offer, probably from a, from a liability standpoint, I suppose, or insurance. But when a product lasts that long over a large expanse like something the size of a hospital, I, I'm sure that it'd be worth a gamble here. But I, I like it, and I'm in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Ms. Fox?
Okay, so for me, I'm looking at what we asked during reconsideration. So the expectations that I believe that we had asked of the applicant was to provide other material cladding options as requested in the preliminary development plan and in the final development plan, and once again during the reconsideration meeting. We asked that they provide a mock-up of Trespa or another secondary material with installation details, edges, corners, and reveal. And then we asked them to provide proof of durability in comparison to the other approved secondary materials. And we also, Ms. Trout said she intended to provide two additional color options. So my concern is now that since Trespa is not appropriate, we have one other option to look at, and there are no other primary options to look at. So for me, I'll just tell you what I think at this point. I really appreciate the work and the, of the mock-up. I really appreciate them bringing forward this. But I am disappointed because the installation, the mock-up, is not sufficient for me to gain confidence in having our zoning inspector review it, who may not be familiar with it, will be a little too late. Although it's really understandable that purchasing the elements for appropriate installation may be cost prohibitive, and I do understand that. That was the promise of the applicant, to provide the installation details. As, as for the aesthetics, the applicant has stated that they wanted a wood look, but have chosen not to offer wood as an option at all. And so even though the applicant may want this secondary material due to maintenance, the trade-off needs to guarantee the aesthetic. Although it does have a wood grain appearance, it is less attractive, in my opinion, in color, warmth, and texture than actual wood. The applicant was asked to reduce the amount of the secondary material, as Ms. Call had asked at the reconsideration meeting. No other design options were offered. Other developments are required to use wood or a previously approved material, and this, this is an exception without any full understanding of the durability. Our code requires that 70% of the building's face contain a prior material unless the planning commission feels a better or more acceptable secondary product justifies the waiver in satisfying aesthetics and durability. The city itself uses wood frequently, even with wood all over it. Even though it is a maintenance, it is more, a little more difficult in maintenance, the city itself sets that example. As for durability, the warranty is 10 years compared to hardy plank, which is a 30-to-50-year warranty, stone veneers, which are 25 to 75 years, and glengarry thin brick, which we use often, is 25 years. This product may be somewhat maintenance-free in that it doesn't need staining or sealing, but the warranty is voided if you use anything other than soft cloths and mild detergents to use it or clean it, although they do allow a free petroleum ether, but no power washing, no chemicals, no abrasive cleaning, no agents of that sort or bleach. And once scratched or dented, it is irreparable and must be replaced. So, you know, I believe that we have given the applicant many, many waivers. But we will set a precedent here today if we allow this particular material, which has a very short lifespan, to be used in more than acceptable percentages on a front-facing facade at a significant gateway of the city. And even though I do appreciate, I truly do appreciate the mock-up and the effort they put forward, I don't believe that they satisfied my expectations on this reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. And Mr. Ridge has a response for the percentage transparency for us. Mr. Ridge?
I do, yes, thank you. So depending on the elevation, but it ranges from approximately 38% to approximately 78%. So again, the south elevation is largely brick, so you're not going to have a lot of transparency there. But it does vary per elevation.
Mr. Ridge, would you mind going through the four elevations?
Thank you. So the north elevation is approximately 78%. East elevation, approximately 46%. South elevation, approximately 38%. And west elevation, approximately 64%.
Thank you, Mr. Ridge. Ms. Fox, does that provide clarity?
It does, thank you.
Certainly. Mr. Fishman?
I, I, when looked at the, I think I agree with who said it, that it looked better from a distance. I told myself I'd have to preface that it's, it's not installed the way it should be installed, but I noticed even the uncut edges look like they could be volatile. And, and as I read, as Ms. Fox read, the, the volatility of the material, if you scratch it, if you can't power wash it, all those things, I, I think it probably isn't the best material. As you go around, drive around the city, you see a lot of wood being used. And the wood is, wood has changed because the product hasn't changed, but the stains and paints have changed. I think Mr. Subalak's the only architect in the room now, but I think he, he'll agree with that. I know in, in buildings that I had built 40 years ago, we had to paint every three to five years, and now we're at 10, 15 years. So I think that when we say we want to use this artificial material, and, and my concern was, I, I had concerns for reading the material then, when we, we finally heard the, the three outside architects, his first statement worried me about the, the, the discoloration of the laminate and so on. And so I, I have a lot of the same concern Ms. Fox has. And, and so I'm, I'm dying to hear what Mr. Subalak says. So, so, so since, I'm sure he's more familiar with, with this material than all of us. So I'll hold, I'll, the rest of my discussion for, and reserve the right to talk after Mr. Subalak does.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. With that, Mr. Subalak.
So I'll, I'll say this. I am in support of this. There is, don't get me wrong, we've said it ad nauseam, the, the mock-up was not done to the craft level I think we all hoped and expected, right? To give us confidence on this, on all this. That, that said, there is, you know, I mean, there's a whole set of drawings here, and they are all but ready. As soon as they, as soon as they were to get our approval, they're already submitting for a building permanent. Like, it, it's, it's happening like that. So this is, this is detailed out greatly. I do, I think we all recognize there is concern about wearability, or weatherability. There is concern about craft. And I actually think, right, on, on both of those things, you have that same concern with wood. So Warren's right, there is wood around the city, but guess what? Wood bleaches in the sun and discolors in the rain and gets mildewy. And I just power washed my deck last week, right? And it looked horrible until I did so. And so if wood goes up in the city, it's also got a similar list of maintenance problems. It is not ever warranted for past 10 years. Hardy plank is, you know, a cementous board, so that gets past it. But if it's real wood, it also has these same problems, right? The same lifespan problems. And so these products are historically an effort to solve for that lifespan problem of wood. I, I, I am tickled with what ProDema looks like in its examples. I, I think Chase said it, some of the, some of the scale and the prominence of some of their examples are the things that start to give you, give you confidence that it has, you know what I mean? It, it is robust and well, well-used in a variety of, variety of places. So I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of this. I recognize that we have done, staff has done a good job of building in provisions for the concerns we have, for the weatherability, the durability, right? If it should go sideways in the future, they have the extra provision added in here. If it's with the concern about the craft, they have the provision in here that will qualify the, the installer here, so that they know we're getting the best craft we can. I, I think it's a, an attractive project, right? If we can get the craft good, it's an attractive project on a significant corner. I'm willing to, I'm willing to let it, let it ride and... Yeah. I, I don't know that I have a whole lot, a whole lot more to say. It's gonna, again, it'll, it'll be the craft and the detailing more so than anything else. And I feel like we have that covered.
Thank you, Mr. Subalak. Mr. Fishman? Warren, you're muted.
Now that I've heard Mr. Subalak, I, I have a couple of questions. First of all, I have a lot of buildings that are, are, have a lot of cedar on them, including my house. And, but the difference is that we can restain them or repaint them every 10 years, and that's about the schedule I have on most of my buildings, is about every 10 years, we, with the new paints. We used to be on a five-year schedule, and with the new stains and paints, we're, we're getting about 10 years. I, I don't think you can do that with this material. And, and my worry is that the maintenance, you get mold on it, green stuff on it, and, and this thing says you can't even power wash it off. So I wonder if there's, if, if everybody's in favor of it, which I'm apprehensive, but, but is there some condition we can put that they have to take it off if it, if it starts looking shabby? But who's going to decide what shabby is and, and so on and so? That's my apprehensive, my apprehension about the material. And, and I haven't had good luck myself with laminate material on, in some of the, on the inside, laminate floors and so on. You, you, you let water sit on it, and it immediately starts bulging at the seams. Now, they've got luxury vinyl now, but that's a solid material straight through, and supposedly it's waterproof. I haven't seen it yet. So I think that that's why I relied so much on Mr. Subalak. I'm sure he's more familiar than I am, but I, I still have apprehension about it. And the, I, I just wonder, you know, how well it's going to be maintained, you know? And, and, and also, I agree with Ms. Fox that, that the products that I use in my buildings, if they think they'll last 30 years, they give you a 30-year warranty, okay? And, and if they don't think they're going to last past, they're going to last 10, you get a 10-year warranty, okay? They'd go out of business if they, if, if, if things, they gave a 30-year and they only lasted 10. So as, as a guy told me, you can't do it twice and make money, okay? So for the same price. So, so, so that's my apprehension, so.
Thank you, Ms. Fishman. Mr. Schneer?
Thank you. This is a tough one. We all bring our own personal experiences to these situations, and when it comes to something like a building material that we all have familiarity with, at least conceptually because of homes or buildings, I would caution, my own feeling is that we, that those experiences may or may not be relevant to what is seemingly a technical discussion on this product. That's just my own point of view. I mean, I had cedar shake, we stained it, we repainted it, but cedar siding, but we also replaced it in 10, 12, every 10, 12 years because it cracked and weathered. And so I think we can all point to, this material lasted forever, and this, and then another case, this material didn't last forever. So I, I just caution, what's, what's our benchmark? Is it, you know, is it wood? Is it brick? Is it something else? I share, I was disappointed in the mock-up, just like I think all of us were. And I would admit I had formed an opinion relative to that viewpoint. But since that time, with, looking at these materials, and particularly looking at the very large installations, I mean, these are, these are AIA award-winning buildings and applications. I, I, I think that it will, will work well. I think the applicant has demonstrated, I, I think there's a, a sufficient commonality, alignment of interests on this. Why would they want to have, warranty notwithstanding, why do you want to have a product that's going to, you know, that you're going to have difficulty with? So I, I give them some credit for that, but I also give credit to the staff, who has spent an incredible amount of time and energy seeking out third-party input on this. And because of all of that, I went from sort of a visceral negative reaction looking at the mock-up, but now understanding why the mock-up isn't totally indicative of the, of the proposed installation. I'm, I'm in favor of it. I also would, would not be in favor of some condition on maintenance or whatever, because I think it just opens it up to arbitrary and capricious, capricious interpretation that would be unfair and arguably unenforceable. So that's my point of view. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. So my, my opinion largely stands unchanged from the last time we met. And I will again say, part, the main part that gives me pause is we are asked to go from 0 to 10. This is not a secondary material we're being asked to consider. This is the main facade of the building with a greater percentage of material even than the main facade of the building, given that we're not meeting the transparency requirements. So we're asked to go from, from having a primary material that is approved, along with a transparency percentage that is approved, on a very, very prominent corner, setting a precedent for the city that will allow for unapproved primary materials in excess of approved amounts. And so if I look at all of those things considered, and I look at some of the discussion across the different entities, the different boards that the city employs, I, I cannot be supportive of something that the city has not approved, that we have a wealth of people, you know, Mr. Subalak is the only architect on this particular commission. However, we do have skilled craftsmen and trained individuals on other boards and other advisory committees that all of these code considerations have gone through. And so I am not in support of the application. I'm not in support of the reconsideration. I think that we did give due diligence to not only the application, but the reconsideration of the application and the secondary reconsideration of the application, but we've seen one type of material. We've changed brands. And Ms. Trout, I think that you stressed, you know, this is a brand change more than it is material change, but we did challenge, you know, if there's something else, if we can produce and make it a secondary material, if we can bring back something that is an approved primary material, and I don't see any of that, nor do I see that considered. And so I cannot be supportive of the application. With that, we have an item, well, first of all, let me ask, has there been any public comments submitted on this item? Mr. Ridge?
There has not.
All right. So looking back to the commission, Ms. Fox.
You know, I, I feel pretty strongly, you know, I was really hoping that we would have some options here, especially since the look of this is to be a wood feel. And the primary material that was available to them is wood, you know? So I wanted to be, I wanted to give them the opportunity to come back and show me the details of the installation, to show me how this is a better and more durable material. I really wanted to see us accept the material. But with a 10-year warranty, I have to ask myself, at the year 15, what will it look like? Because it cannot be repaired. It has to be replaced, whereas wood can be stained and, and repaired. But this one, you'd have to, we just don't know. And I agree with Mark that there are some beautiful installations of this, but we have to follow the guidelines and the code of the City of Dublin, which requires these primary materials, unless there is a persuasive, very persuasive argument to change the precedent, because once we do this, many, many builders will come and ask for this material, and, and will ask for these large waivers on percentages as well. So we are, I wanted to really be convinced, but I, I cannot do it in good faith, after realizing that the secondary materials that we have said okay to have a 20-plus year guarantee. So that's, that's, you know, I, I'm disappointed for all of us, but I, that's the way I feel.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Understanding the comments and the, the positions of the commission members, may I turn some time over to our legal counsel here tonight to discuss what would happen in the event of a three-to-three tie?
So that serves, under the code, you have to have a majority of the present members. I think we have six here tonight. So in order to approve the final development plan, we would need four affirmative votes. A tie would serve as a disapproval.
So Ms. Trout, looking back to you, to see if you would like to continue with a vote this evening, or if you would like the commission to table this item?
If I may, on, on what the expectations would be if we were to request to table this, what is it that we could come back with, absent of a complete redesign, that would change anything here tonight?
Thank you, Ms. Trout. Ms. Fox, I think you did a, a pretty excellent job recounting some of the requests from the preliminary and from the final consideration. Would you mind, I believe you had those in notes, would you mind going through those delineated items that you recited earlier this evening?
I do, but, but I did, I do have to ask legal, because I think that in a reconsideration, there are some guidelines and some rules that we might not be aware of. Am I correct in that? Jesse?
I, as in, can we table it on a motion for reconsideration again, or the, the amount of votes necessary?
Yeah. I, I was under the impression that once you came back for reconsideration, you can't table it and ask to come back again. But I want to be sure about that from Jenny and from legal.
I believe that's correct. While, while you read out what those conditions were, I'll double-check that for us.
Well, because it would be a futile readout if, if this can't even be tabled. So I'll wait on that.
I guess I maybe have a follow-up question to that, Jesse. So they already made the determination on the reconsideration. So right now, I guess my impression was that we were reviewing the final development plan as a whole again. So the reconsideration seemingly had already passed, so they're now looking at...
That's a good point, Jenny. Sorry for missing that step. So yeah, I think we already approved motion to reconsider back in February. So now this essentially serves as a new review of the final development plan. And so they, they could table this at this point. That's a great point. I'm sorry I missed that.
So Ms. Fox, going back to that, answer your question on the reconsideration and the, the rules there?
Well, you know, I'll, I'll read what was asked at the reconsideration, but, but I don't know that necessarily at this point, coming back with more Trespa products or more synthetic products is going to do much for, for me, I guess. So, but I will read what, what we had asked for, and they, and they satisfied some of these. To provide other material cladding options, which we did request at the preliminary development plan and final development plan, and we, we had included a, a primary materials. We asked for the mock-up with all of the details. We asked for proof of durability in comparison to other secondary products, secondary approved materials, which I don't think that is necessary now, because I think, you know, we illustrated what those are. And that is all I had right now. So, yeah. So that's, that's where we were at the last meeting.
So the main one that I see there is bringing forward some other ideas of approved primary materials. I think that's the big piece that we're missing.
Or a redesign, right? Because I, we're, if, you know, that's the, as Ms. Trout said, if this wasn't approved, she would come back with a redesign. So it needed more of the, of the requirements per code.
Thank you, Ms. Fox.
That's up to her.
Do I have permission to respond to that, in that achieving the, the, the look of this building, which has been unanimously supported for over a year now, is not accomplishable by stone? is not accomplishable by stone, brick, or glass, which are the stated primary materials. So we would be facing a redesign. However, we are not considering that at this time, given the circumstances. If this fails and we are not able to proceed with the design, given the reassurances from staff and the conditions of the final plan, our intent is to move forward with the interior renovation and just exterior modifications to the extent that would not require a complete redesign, given the cost prohibitiveness of going back to the drawing board this stage in the game.
Thank you, Ms. Trout, for that clarification. Ms. Fox?
I just want to, I just want to verify with planning, is wood a primary material?
So wood is a approved secondary material. For the code, what would allow, again, certain primary building materials and then secondary building material. And wood is one of those as well as fiber cement siding, metal, architectural metal. So I mean, the reason that this, the scrutiny of this proposed material is that it's a secondary material that's never been considered before. So that's why this is, requires more scrutiny than these others that are listed.
Right.
Okay, looking back to you, if you would like us to consider tabling this item this evening, or if you would like us to move forward with a motion?
That's a tough one. You know, we had support of a previous commission member. And, you know, we really hope that we could convince everyone here. The absence of the new commission member is somewhat disappointing. And I'm in a bit of a tough position. But given the comments here tonight, an absence of a complete redesign at this point, I'm not sure that tabling it would provide you with what you're looking for ultimately. And for that reason, we can proceed with the vote.
Thank you, Ms. Trout. Hearing that from the, Mr. Fishman? You're muted, Warren.
I think this is really a tough one. And geez, I've been wavering back and forth. But I wonder if there's any way we can make meet code. I think the two things that bothered me most before I heard anybody was, well, after I heard what the secondary expert said, his first comment was the durability of the material. And then the other thing is, it's very important to me to try to stay close to code. Because I think Ms. Fox's point is very well made. But as soon as we deviate this much from the code, and Ms. Call too, deviate from the code, we're going to have everybody in the world coming in and saying they did it, and this is what we want to use. So I think that's my problem. So if maybe instead of taking a vote, you can think about maybe coming back and making an alteration in the design materials to make it meet code.
Warren, which code, which code concern are you referring to?
Well, first and secondary materials. And I think that the transparency, we're probably close. No cigar, but I think we're close. And I think they're not meeting code in anything, really. We've got so many variances. And I think Ms. Call made that point, verbalized that very well, that if we can get, make meet code and design the building, I think that I would be, would be more favorable to the application.
So Ms. Trout, going back to you.
Rex has requested to correct some misinformation, if that's okay with you, Ms. Call.
Yes. Mr. Hagerling, you are muted.
Okay, can you hear me?
You're good.
Okay. Yeah, no, I just want to point out a couple of things that, first of all, starting with the third-party architect report, which over, I think it was unfortunate that he started with his three, the three concerns at the end of the report. If you read the entire report, I think he's very much in favor of this material. But when he talks about the warranty on this product, he's comparing it, I think he's conflating it actually with other materials that he refers to seeing around town. It compared other, the installations of similar wood veneer laminate panel products. I don't think that's a correct way to describe this. He's comparing it to other actual, actual wood veneer products, which are failing. This is not really a wood, this is not really a wood veneer. It has wood baked into it. And a couple of other commissioners talked about it being a laminate, and laminate products failed. This product is a solid product, five sixteenths of an inch thick. There is real wood baked into it, but baked into it, not laminated onto it. And as such, and you know, and even I would say, Ashley, I think this is more than just a brand change. You know, I'm hearing, you know, Ms. Fox saying, why aren't we using real wood? Well, there is real wood in this, in this, in this product. I just think it's being talked about in not really the right way. As Mark Supalak said, this is used on some really major, important buildings all over the world and all over the United States. I'm really kind of baffled as to why you and Dublin would not want to take a chance, not want to welcome a material like this. And I don't think you're going to see a lot of applicants of other people wanting to use it necessarily. It's not an expensive material. Heartland Bank is spending a lot of money to provide this. I just, I just think that, I'm just saying, I think things have not been discussed in exactly an accurate way. And I just wanted to, wanted to point that out. And I would also say, I don't think that if in 10 years this product looks bad, I can't imagine that Heartland Bank is going to leave it there. They're going to do something with it. They're going to replace it. They're going to repair it. And then also talking about, you know, not being able to power wash it, or, you know, sandblast it or whatever. I mean, that shouldn't be used as, that shouldn't be used to denigrate the material. There are lots of things that simply aren't appropriate. It doesn't mean the material is bad. Basically, it means that the material doesn't need those kind of cleaning, that kind of abrasive cleaning. It can be cleaned much more easily and correctly. So I'm sorry, I just wanted to correct what I think are some misconceptions that have been floating around this discussion.
Understood. And I thank you for the clarification. So we have an application for reconsideration tonight. The applicant has asked us to press forward with a vote. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Mr. Grimes, I have a first. Do I have a second? Mr. Schneer? Ms. Beal?
Ms. Fox?
No.
Mr. Fishman?
All right, this is tough. I'd say no for now. No?
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
No.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. I do want to offer clarity. And Ms. Fox and Mr. Fishman, if I misspeak on your behalf, please correct me. But I believe the commission is citing tonight the precedent of approving a non-approved primary material as the primary material. And the 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 lack of meeting the transparency percentage as the main reasons for the no vote this evening. Ms. Fox, Mr. Fishman, any clarity that you would like to offer?
I don't, well, I'll just say that I don't recall on the reconsideration that we asked anything about transparency. I think it was primarily the product. And I would say that it is the durability of the product, the installation of the product. And then we did talk about color, the color being acceptable here. But I think it's the installation and question about the durability and the percentages of it, of this particular.
The material attributes of the unapproved primary material, is that?
Right, yes, yes. And the percentage, because we asked for a reduction if possible in a design.
Correct. Thank you, Ms. Fox. Ms. Trout, Mr. Hagerling, thank you very much for joining us this evening. While I understand that this is not what you wanted to hear this evening, I hope that you felt understood, that you felt heard. And Mr. Hagerling, I want to especially offer a thank you for the correction to maybe some misinformation that was being touted. But I think that you will see in the stated reasons for the negative vote was not due to it being a laminate material or not a laminate material, but rather that it is a non-approved primary material.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trout. All right. Our next case is an informal case. We have Baltimore Corner Restaurant at 4595 Bridge Park Avenue for an informal review, This application is a request for feedback on a proposal to encroach the Riverside Drive right-of-way with a building addition and covered patio to accommodate a restaurant tenant located within Bridge Park, block B, Zone Bridge Street District, Scioto River Neighborhood District. The site is southeast of the intersection of Bridge Park Avenue with Riverside Drive. Ms. Martin, I will turn the time over to you for our case presentation this evening.
Great, thank you. Good evening. As mentioned, this is a request for informal review and feedback this evening for a building located within the Bridge Street District, specifically the Bridge Park Development. The site is located on the east side of Riverside Drive, immediately south of the intersection with Bridge Park Avenue, adjacent to future Riverside Crescent Park and the Dublin Link Pedestrian Bridge. Specifically, this is Building B2, which is the Baltimore building, and we are looking at the northwest corner. Existing conditions of the building and vacant tenant space are shown on the screen. This is the ground story tenant space that occupies approximately 6,000 square feet. You'll notice here a vertical pier and tower element, as well as a pocket plaza at the corner. A bit of case history, as the commission may recall. This was most recently before you in April of 2021. At that time, you provided informal review and feedback regarding the importance of the vertical expression at the gateway location, the opportunity to activate the streetscape with this restaurant, the desire to preserve open space areas for pedestrians to exit the walking way. And at the time, there was varying input from members of the commission regarding sidewalk width. The applicant has made updates in response to the commission's feedback. These updates shown on the screen include retaining the pocket plaza at the intersection of Bridge Park Avenue and Riverside Drive. The applicant has reduced the total number of square feet of the restaurant and the total number of seats. So the interior conditioned space is reduced, and it is a total loss of approximately 17. The applicant has also reinforced the gateway by prioritizing the architecture of the base building, exposing the vertical pier, connecting the building from grade to the upper stories. They've also identified opportunities for public art as well as seating. The design of this tenant space will be further refined, provided the planning commission is in support of encroachments along the Riverside Drive right-of-way. This is the footprint of the tenant space shown on your screen. You can see here that at the intersection of Riverside and Bridge Park, the tenant space is pulled back. And here in the detail, you can see the tenant space is wholly within the private property along Bridge Park Avenue. Although along Riverside Drive, due to the sighting of the original building along the property line, there is a request for two encroachments into the right-of-way. The first highlighted in blue is for the building element, which provides conditioned space that is incorporated into the restaurant. The encroachment here is approximately six feet. Additionally, an encroachment shown in purple is for a open and covered patio. This type of encroachment is existing and contemplated within Bridge Park to activate streetscapes through outdoor dining. That encroachment is just shy of five feet. In order to provide clear pedestrian circulation width, similar to the proposal before you in April, the applicant is reducing the width of the planter beds to provide a minimum of eight feet of sidewalk. Updated character renderings have been provided. Here you can see the pocket plaza and how it's been, the building has been pulled back from the pedestrian realm, allowing for additional circulation and congregation at this key location. And finally, here you can see the character of the entire tenant space. The applicant, of course, welcomes comments on architectural character and opportunities for further refinement, should the commission support encroachments and modifications to Riverside Drive. Staff has identified the following potential discussion questions. Does the commission support encroachments into the Riverside Drive right-of-way or a building addition and covered patio? And then the associated modifications to the Riverside Drive planters? If so, does the commission support a waiver to the shopping corridor requirement? This would be required should the walking way be less than 12 feet in width. And then is the commission supportive of the conceptual open space details as well as the architectural character? And of course, any other considerations that should be incorporated should this application advance? With that, our applicant team is here this evening. We have Carter Bean, the architect, as well as Wayne Scheck with Cameron Mitchell Restaurants, and Matt Starr with Crawford Wing.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Mr. Bean? Did you have a statement that you wanted to make this evening?
You know, I had planned to say more, but I don't believe that could have been teed up any better than what Ms. Martin just presented. It was extremely concise and to the point, and very much covers the major items that we have tried to address over the past couple of months. And we have, while we've worked further on the architectural detail, we had a meeting with Ms. Martin and other staff members. And it's apparent that we need to continue working on that detailing. However, what we really would like to hear from this group tonight is if we're on the right path as far as opening up a corner, resolving some of the encroachment issues, and get a sense or a level of comfort moving forward with additional design changes. So Nikki, thank you so much for that presentation. You did a great job, and we'd love to hear from the group. Matt and Wayne, do you have anything else to add?
Carter, thank you. Very well said. Nikki, as well. Thank you for presenting it. As the restaurateur, we're just looking forward to some direction so we can keep moving forward and ultimately open this restaurant. So we think there's a lot of. So we think there's a lot of different ways to solve some of these issues, and we've been working with staff on those solutions. So look forward to some more feedback this evening.
The only thing I would add to that, and thank you for hearing us again on this. I wasn't present at the first meeting. Mr. Hunter was in my place, did a fine job as always. So I won't add a lot. I read, I certainly read the minutes and read your comments and know that we took those to heart, and we certainly incorporated them into these changes. We've had, I don't know how many, Carter, half a dozen Zoom calls at a minimum on this, and there'll be plenty more to come. So we appreciate your consideration and additional feedback here. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. With that, looking to the commission for questions at this point in time. Commission, do you have questions for either staff or the applicant? Mr. Schneer.
Nikki, does the staff have a position on these discussion items?
Could you be more specific? I mean, I would say generally speaking, staff is supportive of this project proceeding in some capacity. I would second Carter. There are certainly opportunities to continue to tweak the design as this progresses forward. The pulling back of the building at the corner begins to fulfill and retain the code requirements for both a gateway as well as the previously approved pocket plaza. Additionally, you know, activating this tenant space in line and kind of in tandem with the opening of Riverside Crossing Park leads to a huge opportunity for the city and for the community to activate that streetscape. So I think, you know, this is, this is certainly moving in a direction that staff is very supportive of, but would defer to the commission on some of those final details.
The waiver, the request for, on the encroachment of the outdoor dining doesn't seem to be much of an issue. But you feel the same way about the encroachment for the conditioned space?
So I think we all agree that the, the outdoor dining is very much contemplated for the Bridge Street District when we have these types of conditioned areas. Maybe they can become a very permanent and prominent element. I think, provided that this can be designed and integrated with the tenant space. You know, it is something we are supportive of, assuming that the minimum eight feet of walking area can continue to be provided.
Perfect. Diplomatic as always. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission at this time for either staff or the applicant? All right. That concludes our question and answers session. We will go on into informal review. We've been asked as a commission to consider this for informal review. Staff has been kind enough to provide us a few talking points. So the first one is, does the, does the commission support encroachments into the Riverside Drive right of way for a building addition and a covered patio and associated modifications to the Riverside Drive planters? So covering that item alone, does the commission have any discussions that they would like to provide for that? Or we to go around and see if we have general consensus on support? Ms. Fox?
I always feel like the bird on the perch. But, you know, I agree with Nikki, and I am excited to see this restaurant be here. I think this is prestigious, prestigious corner in Bridge Park. From the perspective of walking across the bridge and looking at it, from driving or going down Riverside Drive as a pedestrian, and also from Riverside Crossing Park. So as to that question, would I be willing to allow encroachments? I definitely would allow encroachments for outdoor dining. And I am uncomfortable with the building addition in the way it's designed. I'm not uncomfortable with allowing that area to be used as outside dining. And I'm not uncomfortable with the idea that that could be a seasonal, maybe a four-season outside dining. I think the building design right now, really on this significant quarter, does not, to me, justify giving, giving that that land away. But, but the, but the intent of the city is to really invigorate that corner. And it's actually paramount to the city's intention. That is a significant corner. So if we can capture something really different and dynamic and unique on that corner, I'm, I'm willing to encroach, right? So I think this gateway element has to have real artistic interest, has to really invite you to want to go across the street to be there and to linger. And I, and, and the intent of the six-foot encroachment is outdoor dining. So it needs to feel as if it's an outdoor cafe. So it, and I think it, the reason for that is when you're promoting pedestrian interaction and you're walking down the sidewalk, you feel like, and we feel this way all the time when we walk by people on having outdoor dining. You feel like you're kind of part of the crowd. You know, they're having fun, they're talking and all that sorts of thing. That's why we want that. I believe that these sidewalk cafe spaces can be very timeless. And I'm going to ask Nikki, I sent her a few pictures today. I'm not designing for you, but I'm, I'm illustrating to me how dynamic to me this corner needs to be. So Nikki, would you mind throwing those up there? Paris is known for their outdoor cafes. If your corner incorporated indoor/outdoor element that made it look like it was actually an outdoor element, but it's an indoor element, and you can use it and open it up all, all seasons, that kind of meets my, my thinking. Can you go down to, okay, here we are at the corner in Paris, and on the right-hand side is a heated terrace. All the Paris cafes are heated. And the doorways open up so that you're, you're sitting, you don't know if you're sitting inside or outside. So I guess what I would say to you is that corner is so significant that if you could create a corner that was inviting as that left-hand picture is, you're starting to really meet what we think that gateway element, that significant corner, the justification for outdoor dining. This is really unique and different. Whereas the design at present, not that it isn't lovely, it's very generic to me. It's just storefront windows. So, you know, I feel like people need to travel to this corner because it's a unique dining experience. And I think it has huge potential for you. I think it might be the most significant restaurant you develop, and I would really encourage you to, you know, elevate that design aesthetic to a point that we would be willing to give you that entire encroachment.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. All right. Mr. Schneer?
I'm in virtually total agreement with Ms. Fox on this. The encroachment for the open, the outside outdoor dining is, is fine. Now you, you need to sort of bridge the gap, and if you can make the, what you, you know, the conditioned space indoor/outdoor, and you, you know, you've done this. I mean, the avenue, several of your restaurants seem to have some of this concept. And I can't design for you either. But if that, if your conditioned space can be transformed at, at appropriate seasonal times to outdoor space, I think that would, that would be where I would be coming from as well. And I'm very confident that you folks have done it before and can do it again, but even, even better for us.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Mr. Grimes?
I'm in favor of the encroachment. I think that, yeah, it needs more work, but I'm in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Mr. Suplack?
How about this? Yes, encroach. I think it comes with stipulations, though, just like Jane started to allude to, to, right? This, this whole side of the building, I mean, everything on Riverside wants more vibrancy, wants more animation, wants more of this, right? So all day. I'm just worried, and I think, I think like Jane says, the corner needs energy, right? This is such a prominent corner. Obviously, location, location, location. You, you guys know what you're doing. I'm, I'm not going to rewrite your script at all. This is a brilliant play by you all. But I don't know that the energy on the corner is, it's, it's lackluster. And I guess there's even part of me, and forgive me, Carter, there's part of me that's sort of, the design is, the design in general, the palette right now is underwhelming. It's kind of old for old sake. It doesn't feel yet old for vintage cool sake, right? And I think, I think, you know, if we're saying anything about the Mitchell's, the Mitchell's Restaurant, you guys do a great job of old, old vintage cool. And I don't know that it's there yet. And so it's, you know, I mean, it's, it's just not well put together. It's not capturing the energy on the corner. I hate to say it. I wonder if it's, we could quibble and try and push and pull little bits of massing and, and details on it. But I hate to say it. I wonder if it's a relay out of the restaurant itself that causes a new type of energy and flow into your space ultimately. And of course, if it feels like the energy is coming and the city, right? You, you guys and us went all the same stuff. If the energy is there, then yes, take the, take the encroachment and leverage it, leverage it to the guild.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Mr. Fishman?
Yes, I, I, I agree with the previous members. I haven't, I, I, I hate to give the encroachment because it was planned to have that coming off the bridge, and we, we, we give it away, we don't get it back. So I would like to add a new caveat that we make that addition a conditional use. If the restaurant, that restaurant should leave, that, that the space has to be restored and the space given back, okay? So that, 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 because I think, I have confidence you guys could design something to meet our expectations. And I think Mr. Surblock and Mr. Fox and Rayall said it very well. But I, 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 I'm a long-term guy, even though I'm in the last quarter of my life. I'm a long-term for development, and I think that, that, that I'd, I've seen so many times that something spectacular goes in. They get all the variances. The next guy goes in and, and, and uses those variances. And it isn't, it's lackluster, as Mr. said. So I, I think that, I don't know why you would have a problem with doing that. If we get it, if we, if we, and I'm not saying I'm in favor of it. I haven't seen your, your fine-tuned design, but if it, if it meets our expectations, I would like it to be a conditional use. I don't know if that's a problem for you or not. But I, 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 I think that long-term, that would be very important.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. I'll round out the commission. I'm generally in agreement with my fellow commissioners. I do think this is a soft-looking building. I think it's aesthetically pleasing, but I think that this particular corner is held to a different standard. It is the, the platinum plus corner just due to the way that Bridge Park is set up, due to the vision that the city council established in this area, and due especially to this particular parcel in relation to the linear park across the way. The commission, we did kind of blend together the other two discussion items, but I'd like to give opportunities specifically to anyone who would like to address those. There is the 12-foot clear pedestrian area. Is the commission supportive of a waiver of that 12-foot clear pedestrian area? And then is the commission supportive of the general open space details and architectural character? I think that we covered the architectural character. I don't know that we specifically covered the open space. So looking back to the commission, are there any of those three items? Or the fourth, which is any other consideration that anyone would like to speak to? Ms. Fox?
I would ask, I would ask Nikki to put up the 12, an image where that 12-foot just, just to kind of get refreshed everybody and whoever else walked by. When it comes to the, the open space, the pocket plaza is really important. And as you design the entrance to this restaurant, and with the thinking that you're going to do something that, that's not been done anywhere else in the city, maybe, or in Columbus, that is really a unique entrance way. What I was a little disappointed about was that we were told that the vertical element, the vertical element was the pole. Well, the mosaic only goes halfway up. So here we have this vertical element that's only half-dressed. So that, so if you look at two stories, it looks very weird, right? So I don't know how you're going to address that vertical element unless you come up with some really wonderful corner plaza entrance way to your restaurant or piece that, that the vertical element isn't so important anymore. But, but we were told that the gateway required a vertical element, and that pole is only half-dressed. And the pocket plaza just has a couple of benches. So I, you know, I don't want to beat a dead horse, and I've seen the work that you all have done, and I've seen Cameron Mitchell Restaurants. They are to die for. They're beautiful. So I guess what I'm saying is, is that the, the things that you're asking for in the way of a little bit more laxity on these clearances is only justified with really knock them out, knock your socks off, really want to get them to sit on this corner kind of design and attraction. So to me, the pocket park is part of that package. And, and, and doing something with that vertical pole should be at least a complete pole work, not just a half a pole.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Looking back to the commission, any other comments on these discussion items for the commission this evening?
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna second everything Jane just said. And maybe it's, it's all just, you know, it's the same kind of commentary. Everything is working in concert. You guys have an opportunity. Don't, don't miss your opportunity here. You have an opportunity to really sort of, again, create an amazing energy right there on the corner that is directly associated with your restaurant. I recognize that while we're asking for a little more consideration, that's an amazing opportunity. And I, I continued. It, it, it all weaves together. Everything weaves together for good energy. I'm going to generally say, I know you asked a question about the architecture, and I started going down that path. I know, I don't know if KH Designs is also on the call, but maybe I'm speaking to Carter again. I'm going back to the previous documents, and I'm just going to point out, I feel like the, some of the, there's a, there's a document that shows a few different restaurants, right, inspiration images. I think there's a lot more energy there than you have in your, yeah, there you go. I think there's a lot more energy there than you have, and it's sort of cooler, more of a vintage, vintage feel than I think you have accomplished thus far. So I would just advocate for, you know what I mean? Draw some of this, more of this into it as you sort of touch it up and adjust.
Thank you, Mr. Suplack. Any other comments from the commission?
Yeah, the only other one that I would say, and I think I mentioned it before, and Mark is alluding to this, I mean, it really strikes me as just a restaurant with storefront windows. And knowing what you're capable of is And knowing what you're capable of is, you know, is that there's just so much more to offer on that corner. And the images, we're just trying to show you something, we're asking you to give us a dynamic feel that just draws. I mean, Hen's Quarters has great terracing outdoor patio, and they're not encroaching, but I mean, maybe they do a nice job, but I think, like, like Mark said, the opportunity here is significant for all of you and the city as well. So that's what we're asking for.
Thank you. Now, looking back to you, Mr. Bean, and your colleagues, gentlemen, this evening. Have you heard everything you needed to hear? Do you want clarity on any of these particular items from the commission this evening?
No, I think it's been very clear and positive. The encroachment is not at all off the table. It's it's all about providing that wow factor that makes it worth it. So thank you. We appreciate that that feedback. And Wayne, I think we're moving forward, right?
Yeah, thank you, Carter. I do have a couple of questions just for clarity as we go back to the design team here. I am hearing strong, strong encouragement of Four Seasons Outdoor Dining. I heard mention, like, you know, the way we did it at the Avenue, the way it spills out onto the Plaza. I want to ask for clarity. We have heard that the city of Dublin would never again support vinyl dropdowns like we used at Avenue. And I'm also hearing from this commission that this design is too much windows. And that's the, that's the difference is we're building foundations here with windows that retract up horizontally because we're not able to use the vinyl dropdowns for the Four Seasons aspect. So could we have some clarity on that, maybe?
So Ms. Fox, with your permission, I'd like to go back to the presentation that you had staff put together with the the Paris references because I think that that speaks directly to this item.
That's fine. And like I said, I'm not in any way trying to design this, nor would I would I ask you to follow this. It's, for me, it was trying to show how the the corner cafes become so integrated with the building. But the Avenue, the Avenue's vinyl windows are not as attractive as the Pearl's outdoor seating, it looks like to me. And and I think it's a matter of just how you design this outdoor space. Can you go to the next one, Nikki? That one that had sort of the, the sort of the, yeah, on the left. I mean, it's a whole different look. The one on the right is more of a true outdoor dining space, and it just happened to be one that was in the mix of pictures. But I I think there might be really unique ways to create this indoor/outdoor addition that is, that is atypical of what you see on a lot of these restaurants where you just pull the vinyl curtain down or you just lift up a garage door. There has to be more fun to it than that, right?
And I don't, I don't see that bright image mutually exclusive with the glass garage door.
No, I don't either. I mean, that's what I'm saying. I think there's lots of ways to disguise that glass and then add it so that you have your, as we found during COVID, you know, we needed outdoor space during COVID, but to really be, to be profitable, you need your indoor space, too. So how can you get them both with the kind of sense that you have an outdoor, you know, dining experience whenever possible? You know, so it's a challenge, no doubt, but but I think this commission's open to some unique, you know, design opportunities.
Visually, it sounds like it's enclosed outdoor space, blur the lines, make it transparent, rather than open up indoor space, right?
I made the, I made the comment about the Avenue, but I was actually referring to the Avenue in Grandview because that I think does a better job of indoor, indoor/outdoor, as does Delmar, you know, in Short North, that feeling. So if that is at all helpful.
Okay. No, that's all very helpful. Thank you very much. One last question, probably from staff previously. We were given the feedback that the Plaza Park should be its own entity, and it should not relate to the restaurant. If I'm understanding the feedback tonight, you guys want us, want the restaurant to own the corner plaza and make it truly dynamic and integrate it with the feel and the design of the restaurant.
My opinion on that is like we have done everywhere else in Bridge Park. We have an open space. That that open space always was, and I think, Matt, you you know this, you had the opportunity to just design a plaza there if you wanted to. I think the better design outcome is that if you've got a significantly beautiful architectural piece in this restaurant, that you would, you would make sure that there is a marriage of elements that makes it look like it belongs there. Because what's the sense of putting a couple of benches in a planting pot if it looks stupid next to all that money you spent? So I would encourage, you know, Crawford Hoying to work with you to make sure that that design element just says, wow, I mean, it's like the little frog park over next to Jenny's Ice Cream. I mean, they look like they belong together. You get an ice cream, you go sit by a little frog. I mean, you just find something that makes that work. But certainly, they shouldn't be separate like they don't belong together. After all, they're they're neighbors, right?
Correct.
Mr. Fishman.
Yeah, I I think that that's well said. I would be much more favorable of the encroachment if it if it was a really cool blend that people would go, wow, as they got off the bridge and 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 the the whole area was improved. And I don't know how my idea went about the conditional thing. I think that that in the foreseeable future, the restaurant will be there. I just want to make sure that 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 it's recognized that 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 is an encroachment for the next guy that comes in and that, you know, so, but but I'm in, I I I I don't like to to make the space smaller, but if it's integrated well and beautiful and spectacular, I don't think how, see how we can go wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Any closing comments from the commission? All right, looking back to the applicant, is there clarity desired on anything? Would you like to make a final statement?
I just have one question that I'd like to ask. I think Jane might ask this question or made this point about about the column extending up into the second floor. And I don't know that we've really discussed it on any of our design calls. Maybe maybe we touched on it briefly. Obviously, there's more architects on this call, but that's a different tenant space, right? So it's how do you, how do you deal with that, right? Because it is a completely different space and use up there. She might enjoy us fancying that column up, but I just don't know how that will translate. I guess it's something we'll study.
You know what I'd say to you, Matt, about that? One of the options on a gateway is a vertical element. But I could totally ignore that ugly looking column if you made that one heck of a corner and that was the gateway impression. Because honestly, if you, that is not a gateway element, right? That's not a tower that we intended. It's a pole. So I want to beat yourself up trying to make that pole pretty, but I sure would give it, I'll give, go to the fences on making that corner dynamic, and I can ignore that pole.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Any final clarity or questions from the applicant? Any parting words from the commission?
What about the water fountain? Is that something that could be possible?
What water fountain?
The water fountain, that's like right by the corner. Is that something that could be, you know, could be done?
Are you suggesting one might be added, Karen?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I don't know. I think it's it's really the whole comprehensive design of it all. I mean, I, I mean, we're open to anything. I mean, but but I think you understand how significant the corner is. So I mean, it can't just look like any other restaurant in town. I mean, it has to, I mean, you can try water fountain. You can try, you can try all kinds of things. Just, just impress us.
I think the feedback's been wonderful. And Nikki, would you mind sending the the images that were shared tonight, please?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Well, gentlemen, it has been a pleasure talking with you this evening. We are certainly looking forward to this particular corner and the vibrancy that we expect will come along with it. It's always a pleasure to look at the iterative design elements of an application as it comes from the the vision, the ideation of functionality, all the way through to what is actually implemented. So we certainly look forward to the next stages in our discussions, and we wish you all the luck and all of the benefit of continuing to work and, as Mr. Suplack likes to say, to love on this application a little bit more.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, our next item is the Dublin Corporate Area Plan Mixed Use Regional Review. So tonight, cases three, four, and five will be heard together, and I will read those cases into the record. Case number 19-117, ADMC Code of Endments. Case 421-086, ADMC Design Guidelines. Case 520-180, excuse me, 087, ADMC, An Area Rezoning. The first application, 19-117, is an introduction of proposed amendments to the City of Dublin zoning code to create the MUR4 Mixed Use Regional, the Welland Farms Office District, which includes the creation of a new zoning district and associate, associated development standards. The second application, 21-086, is an introduction for the proposed design guidelines to complement the proposed MUR4 Mixed Use Regional, the Welland Farms Office Zoning District requirements. And the third application, 21-087, is an introduction for a proposed area rezoning accompanying the creation of the MUR4 Mixed Use Regional, the Welland Farms Office Zoning District. Ms. Roush, you have our case presentation this evening. Welcome.
Thank you. I do. Good evening, everybody. Can everybody see my presentations screen, okay? Okay. So, good evening. As you mentioned, this is three applications before you tonight outlining the code guidelines and area rezoning. And again, we did provide some background at a previous meeting just about D cap in general. I'll do a quick overview of that just to help sort of reset us as we move forward. So as we've noted in your packet and your memo, that the Dublin Corporate Area Plan was adopted by council in September of 2018. And as part of that, there was a creation of four districts within that area plan. The mixed use regional, one, two, three, and four, and we have identified which geographic areas in the city that those equate to. The applications that are before you tonight are only MUR4, which is highlighted in red and shown in the lower right hand side of your screen for everyone's reference. So the overall goals for the Dublin Corporate Area Plan, we're really looking at repositioning our legacy office buildings to our older office areas and how to provide more vibrancy in terms of walkable mixed use, helping to provide services to that area and refresh the streetscape, particularly along France Road as that's a major corridor, and looking for, you know, how we can provide additional regulations and mechanisms to to do that, implementing that through the zoning code amendment, as well as through the as well as through the design, right, design guidelines. Are you seeing my whole presentation or only part of it?
I believe the whole, but but we're seeing the presenter view, not the full screen view.
Let me try again here, just to get the full experience here. How about that? That looks better on my side anyway. Okay. Okay, so to continue. So as we outlined also in the memo, when the Dublin Corporate Area Plan was approved and adopted by council, there was then subsequent discussions about the phasing and how to implement these four districts. And we were, staff was directed to handle phase one, which is this MUR4, the Mixed Use Regional Four District, which again is in the lower right hand of your screen, which is east of France and south of Ring area. So it encompasses that lower portion of the city. And then phase two will be MUR1, which is the Metro Blazer area, and then future phases to address the other districts outlined in D cap. So particular to the MUR4, I wanted to highlight the plan recommendations for what was outlined for this particular area in D cap. And really, the the goals of MUR4, due to its adjacency to residential, was looking at lower density office uses as well as for those sites that are located adjacent to residential, that there is a two story height limitation, increased setbacks, and accounting for landscape buffering in there to provide that. In addition to that, there were some site specific recommendations for properties that are, were undeveloped in this. And on your screen, you'll see the little blue box highlighted here that refers to site 11 within the plan, which is the only undeveloped parcel within this MUR4 district. And that had some additional recommendations, again, asking for lower density uses, but having additional recommendations related to building height. So a two story building with a flat roof or a one and a half story maximum building height if there was a pitch roof. And again, additional buffering requirements were recommended as part of that. And then again, just to remind everyone, sort of through our planning process, where we are here in the sort of compendium of planning to implementation and zoning. So obviously, we have our community plan that really helps inform how the city's going to grow and develop. And within the community plan, we have these special area plans, and the Dublin Corporate Area Plan is one of those particular special area plans that provide additional detailed policy to help us, you know, guide us in when development or redevelopment is happening within that specific geographic area. And then the implementation, sort of the legal mechanism to implement that is the zoning code and the guidelines, which is what is before you tonight. And in terms of then the timeline that we have so far, and then moving forward, just so that everyone's aware of what happens, what's happened thus far, and then what's happening next. So as I mentioned, the area plan was adopted in 2018. Then we had the discussion with the Community Development Committee in March of 2019, where they outlined how we were going to phase this. And that sort of kicked off our staff development of the code and the guidelines and drafting those documents and working through what those requirements might be, trying to align those with the recommendations of the plan. We did provide an update to City Council in March of this year, just on the status of that. And then the green box here in the middle is where we are tonight. So tonight, as the chairperson introduced, was this is just an introduction, no formal actions being taken tonight. This is just an opportunity for the commission to become familiar with the three applications before them, as they've not seen those in totality. And then following tonight's meeting, we'll be again back before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Again, given our previous zoning reviews, it's been through multiple meetings for other applications. So I would anticipate several times that we would be back before the commission before the final recommendation is made. And Planning Commission would make that recommendation to City Council, who is the required reviewing body to make the final determination on all three parts of this, so the code, the guidelines, and the area rezoning. And as I mentioned, these are our three components, the zoning code, the design guidelines, and the area rezoning. And as I mentioned, so only an introduction tonight, and then once we have direction tonight, we will direction tonight, we will then be back before the commission and then back, and then on to council, once planning commission, commission makes that final recommendation. So in terms of the code, um, what we've taken, the steps we've taken so far to develop this, obviously are looking at the area plan and what those recommendations are and how we can implement those in terms of regulations and guidelines. Um, but also trying to balance what is viable for commercial property owners within this area, because these restrictions will impact how they can develop or redevelop their, their properties. But also obviously taking into consideration what, what concerns the residents have um, and, and what was discussed as part of the area plan, and how do we address those? Um, and make sure that we are looking at all those, all three of those factors as we brought this forward to you tonight. Um, so in an effort to do that, we've met with the commercial property owners on multiple occasions, as well as the residential property owners within the Llewellyn Farms. And we've had a really good working relationship with them, um, as well as the commercial property owners as well, trying to understand everyone's perspective and bringing something forward tonight. Um, and as outlined in your memo, we have had some challenges in terms of how to move forward, um, particularly related to parcels that are abutting residential and that site number eleven, um, which is an N R I parcel, which is Nationwide Realty. That, but that's the undeveloped parcel that abutting Llewellyn Farms and how that should be handled. And again, just working through the modified draft of the code and the guidelines as we've gone along. So we wanted to bring that forth tonight to, again, to introduce this to you, to get your initial feedback. We have lots of public comments, um, as well. And I thought I would just go through briefly what the zoning, what the three applications include. And then I have some more specifics about those three elements, um, that, that we have before you as well. So the zoning code, um, as you look through those documents, looks at, um, it's divided into four sections. So the purpose and intent, so looking at the goals of the Dublin Corporate Area Plan, how that, um, how the requirements should then be upholding that, as well as how the code would be then used in conjunction with the guidelines. On the next section is related to uses. So as with all of our sections of code relating to zoning districts, that would have all the permitted conditional size, time-limited accessory uses that are permitted within that area, um, as well as outlining if there's existing uses or expansion of existing uses, how those should be handled, because we want to be mindful of those properties that are existing and operating and that we don't create problems for them. Um, and then I've included a list of some of the permitted uses within this, which include obviously office uses, professional technical training, research development, banks, daycares, government services, and parks, and open spaces. Um, and additionally, in this uses section, there's obviously accessory and temporary uses, and those are permitted only in conjunction with a permitted use or an approved conditional use. Um, and then as we have done consistently with the Bridge Street District and the Historic District, we have included use-specific standards. So for a number of the permitted and conditional uses, particularly daycares and banks and professional training, we have added that extra layer of scrutiny and requirements, um, within there, as well as a number of accessory uses, have those additional use-specific standards. Um, continuing on, then we have the site development standards area. So that includes the general development standards such as lot width, block coverage, building height, setbacks. Then we also have within this section, architectural design, landscaping and tree preservation, parking, circulation signs, lighting and utilities. And then we also then have the review process. So we provided, um, obviously within the code, the process summary table. And that shows the application types within there. Um, and I just listed a couple here. But also it shares who the required reviewing body is. So you'll see within there that a majority of the major applications will be coming to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review and approval. Um, that would include a concept plan, a final development plan, a master sign plan, and waivers. Those would be the ones that come before the commission. And all of those applications, um, would follow our public noticing requirement. So if you're within a hundred and fifty feet, when one of those applications moves forward, um, the, the property owners within that hundred and fifty-foot range would be notified and able to make comment as part of that public process. Um, this does also include for concept plans with a development agreement, that city council would be engaged um, in, as part of the reviewing body for that particular application. That's consistent with, um, Bridge Street. And then minor projects would be handled by the administrative review team. And then there are limited staff approvals, similar to our other districts with minor modifications and administrative departures. Um, in terms of the guidelines, that's really looking at what is supplementing the code um, in terms of design intent. So looking at all the building-related factors, so roofs, massing, materials, colors, signs, height, so adding a little, um, extra subjectivity um, in terms of indiscretion for the planning commission and for staff, um, as we administer the code to help bolster what the vision is for this area. Um, there's also guidelines related to site design. Um, and again, those, both of those, the building design and site design would cover any, um, M U R district within D cap. Um, but then there are also then a third section within the guidelines that are specific to M U R four. So there's sub-district standards within there that provide, um, extra design details that apply only to those properties that are within that sub-district. And then the final part of the application is the area rezoning. So there are twenty-seven parcels, um, within this rezoning district. And again, the current zoning ranges from community, commercial, suburban office, or a planned unit development. Um, and, and the proposal would then be for all of those to be rezoned as part of the M U R four um, area rezoning. So that's, that would be the third portion of this. So then from there, I really just wanted to highlight, um, some, as I mentioned, some of the previous challenges and sort of outlined for you all, just so you have an understanding of what, what the concerns are and how we have tried to mitigate those. And want to talk that through with you this evening. And I know that you received earlier in the week, um, some really great consolidated comments from the Llewellyn Farms Civic Association as part of your packet. Um, that they do a really nice job of providing a detailed summary of what, um, what their asks are. And I, again, are three major concerns that we have consistently tried to work with them are, are related to building heights, setback, and then screening and buffering. Um, and again, a lot of that is for those properties adjacent to residential, particularly that site number eleven, which is that blue, um, blue area. And then also, we have also worked with the Nationwide Realty Investments, the N R I property, who are the owner of that parcel, the undeveloped parcel. And heard their concerns about the draft regulations and guidelines and the concerns about the restrictions being placed upon them. Um, and as part of that, there has been some discussion and potential requests for them to remove themselves from, from the area rezoning, um, request. So if they want to pursue that, they would have to make a formal request, and that would be reviewed as part of your, your recommendation before that's forwarded on to city council. But that would come at a later, later point. Um, and a representative from actually the neighborhood and from N R I are both here tonight to make public comment to you all when I'm done, and I promise I'm almost there. Um. So we have had some really great discussions with both groups and addressed a number of issues as we've worked our way through here. Um, and I highlighted that in your memo, but I thought it would be helpful just to highlight that as well. Um, we have added requirements and guidelines, um, within the draft that address minimum lot size and frontage, um, increasing the setbacks. Talked through some maximum building heights and made some changes to that. Um, I mean, as, as you'll notice, there'll be some of those that aren't dressed to the satisfaction of everyone, but we have tried to work through that. Um, looking at increased landscaping and buffering, architectural design and window placement. There was a lot of discussion about windows adjacent to residential and what, um, impacts that may have on a residential area if it's with this proximity. Um, we've added, added and subtracted uses and developed use-specific standards um, as well as then site design guidelines. So we have had a lot of discussion about recommendations for parking lots being located between the residential properties and the commercial buildings to provide that extra layer of setback and buffering. Um, and then obviously looking at storm, or excuse me, stream corridor protection, um, storm water management, and then, but also highlighting that in some of these instances, the planning, planning and zoning commission review of, of a future application would be a new process um, that some of the current property owners do not have to adhere to. So a lot of them that are the standard districts would just proceed to a building permit. So recognizing that there is a layer of review that some of these property owners don't currently have. So I wanted to provide, um, some information, which again, then was provided within your emails this week of updated information, but you know, our sort of three main sticking points in terms of what the development standard is, in terms of the existing code versus the proposed, versus what the residents are requesting and versus, um, what we had, had previous discussions with Nationwide Realty about, um, just so you can sort of get a sense of what, where the differences are here. So within the areas that are the standard office or within the Llewellyn Farms P U D, which default to S O standards, um, there's not a real height, maximum height for buildings, other than it's based on a formula in terms of the sum of the height and the length of the building dictates the setback. So the taller the building and the longer the wall, the more you have to set that back. So ultimately that equates to height overall, but there's not a maximum height currently stipulated within S O. So within the draft code, um, it's currently proposed, and there's a lot of nuances to this, so bear with me here, um, in that if you're abutting residential, um, the, and not on Bradenton, um, the current code recommends two stories at a height of twenty-two feet, but that could be increased, um, with a setback ratio of one, one foot to every three feet, um, up to thirty-two feet maximum. Um, for the Bradenton parcels that abut residential, the current proposal is one story or twenty feet maximum. Um, for then the other properties that are north of Tuttle Crossing, um, a two, that are not abutting residential, the, um, story height is limited to two stories with a thirty-two foot maximum. Um, and then those properties that are south of Tuttle, um, which don't abut residential, is a three-story with a forty-foot building height maximum. Um, so within the residence's request, um, they have requested a two-story maximum with a twenty-five foot maximum height overall. And really wanting to, again, use that one to three ratio, but starting at fifteen feet at a seventy-five foot building setback. So they are wanting a smaller building with a larger setback, allowing then for that to be increased up to twenty-five feet with a hundred and five foot building setback. And then for the Bradenton parcels, um, their request shows a one-story with a slope group with a twenty-foot maximum um, or matching the existing height and size of, of the existing buildings to maintain that character. Um, and then previous discussions with N R I was looking at a thirty-five foot building maximum with then a one to two ratio, um, but starting at twenty-two feet at a seventy-five foot setback and ending up at thirty-five and a hundred and one. So again, we're, we're looking at that, you know, what's our, what's our maximum, and then what's the ratio at which you could increase your height and up to what, what number that might be. And then we've also included for the, um, setbacks for pavement and landscaping, what the current code allows. Um, so the current code requires a six-foot width with one tree for every forty feet plus a six-foot high screening. The current draft of the code is a thirty-five foot buffer, um, based on the field conditions, but the four-foot high opex screen. Um, the residents are requesting a thirty-five foot buffer with, um, bounding and a nine-foot tall screen, and they also have some, um, narrative in their proposal that outlines um, how the, how the planting should occur and the, the spacing for that in a staggered row. And then previous discussions with N R I was a twenty-five foot buffer with allowing some flexibility, um, for them to ensure they have enough parking for their site. And then in terms of the setbacks for building and the side yard setbacks, um, the current code is a fifteen-foot minimum, but again, if your building is taller or longer, then you have a greater setback. Um, and then the current code is seventy-five feet if you're abutting residential. And then for the Bradenton parcels, they would be twenty-five if it's a budding residential. Um, and the residents were in their requirements or requests, looking at ensuring that the residential setbacks were, um, provided, and then N R I's request was fifty. And then similar for the side yard, um, fifteen feet minimum, but again, that's that same formula of one-fourth of the height and the length of the wall adjacent, and then ultimately would be ten feet would be the minimum, but if you abut residential, then seventy-five feet would be your, your minimum side yard setback. Similar for the residents and N R I. So residential standards requests for the neighborhood and fifty feet minimum for the N R I. So with that, I have no more, no more information to impart upon you, but happy to answer any questions that you have. It's a lot of information. Um, and again, I'm happy to go through any other pieces or parts to help provide some clarity and answer any questions. And again, this isn't the last time you're going to get to see this, so. I suppose I'm, I'm done. Um, and then like I said, there are some residents and the commercial property owners here as well.
Thank you, Ms. Roush. At this time, we'd like to enter into questions. So I'll turn some time over to, to the commission. Do any members of the commission have questions on the presentation provided by Ms. Roush this evening? Not a talkative group this evening.
You're all asleep.
There's a, there's a lot to digest.
Yes, there is. Um, and, and in the interest, I know that we have members of the, the public here this evening, and we, we certainly appreciate your time, but I would like to not lose oversight of the public person, participation. So with the commission's indulgence, what I'd like to do is provide a summary of each of the comments that was provided before today. And then anything that was provided today, if we could have staff read into the record. So, um, I believe I have everyone, but I'd like to go down the list. Um, we have Mr. Josh Kinsel, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounce names. Uh, Mr. Peter Hutchins, Joseph Kausa, Michelle Featherly, Carol Mack, Kelly Stover, Stover, and Allah Bujali. Um, all, oh, excuse me, two more. Kelly, uh, Man Yusax, Cindy Seber, all, uh, highlighted some of the same items. Lower density, proper building heights, proper setbacks, proper landscaping. Mr. Joseph Cusef added on to that specifically taller dense commercial, uh, abutting residential and low density protecting the residents. Mr. Josh Kinsel, uh, Kelly Min Yusix and Cindy Seber also offered specific recommendations, very similar to what Ms. Roush read in. We also have Carolyn and William Tabor, offered independent, um, but related uh, suggestions. They recommended no changes to the D cap. Adam Shower uh, highlighted that he was not in favor of the taller buildings, the light pollution, the parking lots, the commercial residential abutting, highlighted safety concerns and the reduced property taxes. And Mr. Glenn Vanderbilt highlighted that there was empty commercial currently existing in the city. He was not in favor of the taller buildings, nor did he think that that contributed to empty commercial, I'm sorry, that that, um, was warranted, given the empty commercial, was not in favor of this near a school and asked us also, like many of the others, to honor the integrity of the D cap. I believe I covered everyone who had submitted comments prior to today. But again, if I could ask staff to read in anything that was received from midnight oh one, so would have been timestamped for today forward.
I will do that. We had several come in this evening during our meeting, and then I think there was a couple that came in later this afternoon that were not included. So I will go through those quickly here. Um, so the first is from, uh, Margery, uh, Thomason, and she is at forty-six. and she is at 4656 Bridle Path Lane. And she says, please identify a current Dublin zoning area that implements the changes proposed in the decap MUR for, for review by Llewellyn Farms resident. Also, please provide a mock-up of what France Road between Monterey and Tuttle could look like if maximum height and minimum setbacks were approved for implementation. Then I have one from Glenn Vanderbilt at 4776 Bellfield Drive. And it says, I drove down France Road today, as I often do, a 20-year resident of Llewellyn Farms, and I still do not see the need for more bigger commercial property. The corner's property is now building, and while much of the property is empty, just building new taller, more contemporary looking buildings will not guarantee tenants. I also still love the cornfield across from the concrete cornfield. That should be maintained as a natural site, perhaps a park, not commercial real estate. Keep it open and not commercial. Then I have Merlina Galbraith at 4203 Hurtford Lane. I think the planning commission needs to honor the decap for MUR4 with low-density buildings, proper buffering and height limitations, especially where it abuts residential property. This draft does not do that as it is currently written. Along the Bradenton Corridor, buildings should not exceed one story or 20 feet on a pitched roof as it is today. That complex was thoughtfully developed simultaneously with the neighborhood. It is not blighted. It is owned by individuals, and we do not need to spur redevelopment in this area. Rezoning this to promote anything different would alter the character of the area and the neighborhood. The area of our neighborhood that backs to Kramer Creek, to the Kramer Creek area, should not have buildings larger than the homes, and the setbacks should be appropriate such that businesses should not be able to look into residents' homes or yards or intrude on their way. They should be mindful developments like that of the current Bradenton Corridor. There is plenty of area for high-density development elsewhere. We should be carefully, extremely careful with how we proceed in this area that is so close and abuts residential laws. All of our property values in the neighborhood are at stake if this is done wrong. Thank you for your time. And did you note one from Clay Dany? I didn't hear you say that.
Let me look. Dany? I do not believe I did.
Okay. So Clay Dany at 5775 Settlers Place. I'm grateful to live in a city where collaboration amongst the city businesses and residents is encouraged. It's complicated, but gathering different perspectives and executing on a vision can pave the way for a new future where everyone wins. The city can secure that new future through prudent rezoning. To miss this opportunity would be a failure, and as the saying goes, failure is not an option, especially in Dublin. Present-day zoning for this area is not very good for any stakeholder group. Commercial property owners have square footage and layout limitations. Residents do not have adequate buffering or explicit height protection. The city does not have a review process or a clear path to economic growth in this part of Dublin. The key factors in this complex zoning equation are building proximity to residents and building height. The landscape buffering enhancements in this draft are good, but the rest still miss the mark in terms of providing residents with critical, most critical protection, building setback and height, as outlined in the Dublin Corporate Area Plan. These protections matter very much, and our backyards are where our lives happen, where we play T-ball with our children, enjoy our morning coffee, where we celebrate anniversaries, graduations, and birthdays. Stakeholders have provided their input. Now all we ask that you do is your best work to secure the best future for all of us. Thank you for investing your time in this important endeavor, and we are grateful for your dedication and service to this great city. That is all I have received thus far.
Jenny, can you do me a favor and bring back up, you have those comparison charts? And I don't think, I can't find it in our stuff. That doesn't, that's not in our documents anywhere, is it?
It is not. I can put it in Dropbox for you all, because I wanted to make sure I was reflecting the most up-to-date information from the neighbors. So. Okay. Can you see that? Okay?
And again, I'm, I'm just. The suburban office is only, the suburban office used in the current code is only the Site 11?
It's Site 11, but all of the sites that are zoned PUD have, they would default to that SO zoning for their development standards because that PUD is so old, it does not have the level of development standards that we have today.
Got it. And then relative to this, I guess I'm, I'm just trying to discern, are we suddenly allowing as you, as we move into the various sort of, you know, 22, two stories, 22, two stories, 25, the 35? Are we getting taller from the current situation?
So the, the code currently does not have a maximum building height. It's really based on how you can configure your sites. You could have a taller building. You just have to have the setback in order to do that. So it's really depends on your building placements. It's not a great, it's, it's like a puzzle. It's kind of hard to figure out.
No, I, I get it. And maybe, maybe I'm asking it poorly. What could, and given the current code and given, I'm gonna, you pick it, you pick the site, what could the building be? And then I'm just trying to unpack, like, I know we're writing it in very different ways, but I'm trying to unpack. Are we actually capping the intensity by putting a cap on the height suddenly? Or are the sites such that, nope, it's actually would, would be capped out at a, you know, a 15 foot high building, in which case our 22 feet and our 25 feet and let alone our 35 feet are all taller?
So we looked at a, a number of different development scenarios. And again, without a real proposal, it's kind of hard, right? Because we're just stabbing in the dark, but using our educated, educated guesses there. So I think the, the building height maximum number, we didn't, our scenarios don't really take into account what that, whether it's 22 or 25 or 30 or 35, they would really account for whether it's a one or a two-story building. So in, in most of the scenarios that we looked at would be a two-story. I think there may have been one, and I wanted to go through and look at that. And I can maybe answer that here in a second, is maybe a three-story. But again, you have your square footage, you have to be able to park it. And for that, particularly if you're looking at that site number 11, they have some site constraints due to stormwater protection. So there's a, of the lower portion of their site, they can't develop because they have other challenges and potential restrictions due to stream corridor if we're looking at that one. So.
So in, in your answer generally, what I'm hearing is it's, it's roughly a two-story building without the stipulation of how tall your stories are, mind you, nobody's gonna, you know, do a 50-foot story without sort of shooting themselves in the foot regardless. So, and where I'm going is so these, each of these, from that point forward, is actually pretty comparable. You know, there's some, some nuance there, but they're, they're kind of comparable in that they're all two stories. Even the NRA request is in large part, it gets a little bit cut off on our screen, but in large part, it looks like a two-story with some sort of setback sort of increases based on that, that might get them a little bit more on the total scale of the building, but still two-story?
Yeah. And I don't, and at least based on our previous conversation, and Matt Cole's here from, or he was, from, from NRI related, related to this, and our discussion was, again, they wanted a larger maximum height. So they wanted 35 feet, and they wanted to be able to start at a, a little higher building as, at 22, as opposed to the neighbor recommend, recommended 15 feet. So again, at this point, it's more of what's our maximum number gonna be in terms of height? I don't, as far as I recall, they were not arguing whether it should be taller than a two-story. It was that they seemed to be okay with the two-story max. It's just that maximum height number and, and the ratio that you'd be able to get there quicker. Which doesn't match for that particular site, what's the area plan recommends for Site 11? Because if you're using a flat roof, you can have two stories, but if they're using a pitched roof, the plan recommends only one and a half.
Got it. Well, and I guess I'm even going to the, the adjacent residential houses are 22-ish feet if they're two-story easily at that, without, without let alone a 75-foot setback. Can I see, can we see the, you have more charts like this? And by the way, fellow commissioners, I'm, I'm going here because I want to sort of unpack these and understand. There was one comment that was specifically, the current code doesn't really help anybody, isn't really good for anybody involved, but I'm trying to understand what we're actually doing, right? And the concerns for intensity, I think we all would agree with. But I'm trying to understand where are we moving from and to on some of these things at present is, is maybe I'm just trying to get a better look at it.
Yep. And I think that that's completely appropriate. I do want to highlight some of the comments that Jenny made, just as far as where we are in the process. So, so I, I think we're all on the same page there, understanding that this is an informal review this evening, but that the MUR4 is, Jenny, how would you describe it as far as specifically where we are in the process of these particular affected parcels? And I want to highlight specifically the one parcel that you mentioned may want to exclude themselves, but how that application would move forward so that we all make sure that we're looking at the details. Mr. Supalack, I think that you're, you're completely on the right page of stepping through this iteratively, but at the same time, understanding where we are in the process.
Yeah. So again, we're, as it's proposed, we're really looking for some guidance. Again, you all having the opportunity as we go through this to review the plan recommendations, to understand the residents' perspective and their concerns, but also then balancing what the commercial property owner's desire is to be able to effectively develop their, the NRI site in particular, but the other sites, if they would have a redevelopment opportunity, and trying to understand the history related to that. So again, it, we have worked really hard and we have come very far through this collaborative process. It's really these major points, which are really important points for everyone involved, and how, how to finally, you know, get some clarity and recommendation on how to move forward with those as we continue to review them. We're close. It's just, it's challenging.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Roush. Ms. Fox?
You know, one, I think it's really important to hear the presentation this evening by the residents. But I, but I want to say that, one, I want to compliment our planning staff for taking the time. There's been a lot of discussion with, you know, with the residents in trying to find a win-win situation here. And they understand, I believe, that the suburban office current code may not have, have brought development to this point and because of the configuration of the lot, but that the MIR4 code can offer them better protections. When the decap, I'll just, I'll just give this a little bit of background. When the decap was brought forward to them, the promises of the low density, the setback, the buffering and height were all, were all pretty well described in a general terms, but not in specifics. So I'll let them speak to this, but I, but I do want you to know that they do believe that MIR4 zoning can be a win-win situation. It's just, we have to, we have to make sure that we don't hurt them in any way when it comes to new development. And I think that's what council has promised all along, even prior to my coming there. So it is important to look at all of these specifics and be absolutely clear that, that our recommendations don't do that.
Agreed.
Do we, how about this, relative to that, so you brought up a different sort of comparison column that we should probably be mindful of, i.e., right? As it's, there's the current situation, the current code, which in, by, by and large, and where I'm going is by and large, you flash the setbacks and the buffering, and the setbacks and the buffering improved drastically from the, from the current code, regardless of who's requesting it, right? So it's just nuanced between those requests. But if there was promises or conversation or implied, you know, I, I don't know, relative that DPAC conversation, that might be the, the part we, a lot of us don't know because we were not there, we did not participate. And how do we capture or itemize that relative to that chart? So that we know, yes, we are improving the buffer and setback pretty substantially, but this was what was at some point articulated or sort of head-notted to in large part, you know what I mean, with, with the community.
Yeah. Right. I do want to make sure that we're, we're following somewhat of, of what we've been advised in that we're currently at the part of the meeting, at the part of this item, where we are asking questions and seeking that clarity that Mr. Supalack just alluded to. And then that we enter into the public comment to make sure that anyone else, because we do have representatives from the, the public here with us tonight, in addition to the public comment that we've received, and then go into actually the discussion and, and the opining, so to speak. So, so with that, I think, Mr. Supalack, you were absolutely on the right track with if we could get the presentation and at the same time, if we could ask questions, whether there was additional discussion before landing on what's being presented as the proposed items in each of these bucket of areas. Is the commission generally supportive of that approach? Ms. Roush, then if you could go back to those presentations, the, the charts specifically, and then if you have any background or any insight into those previous conversations, the discussions on each of those individual items?
Absolutely. And I did just right now save that summary chart and put that in your Dropbox folder. And I'll do the same for the presentation, that we have all those materials just for your reference moving forward. Shared here. I mean, I think the best way to summarize it is these outstanding issues related to the building height and the setbacks and the buffering that are provided in the plan are really what council was weighing in on. And that's why that was included as part of the plan was particular, particularly for the properties that abut residential in that site number 11, wanting to, and Jane, correct me if I'm wrong here, but you know, the way that's written in the plan and the plan recommends really is what council has reviewed and, and adopted. So the recommendations that are in there represent that history and what, you know, what they thought was important to bring forward as part of the recommendation. So the challenge I think that staff has had is that there's also then, there's definitely that really important piece, but then also how are we balancing the commercial viability for these commercial property owners? So that's where we've sort of had this rub, if you will, in terms of how to implement that. My, is that fair, Jane?
I, I, I think it's, it's fair, except that the devil's in the details. And I think that when the decap plan was proposed in public meetings to a couple of years ago, there were not height in feet, there was not setback in feet, there was not buffering in feet. There was the promise of protection, guaranteed protection, but not a specific height, depth and, and buffering width or the kinds of materials. And that's what planning has been actively working with the residents to come to. And that's why you are seeing a little variation in what they want, what planning is suggesting and what NRI wants. So that's, there was, there was no, no specifics early on when they agreed to the decap plan. They just were expected to be able to get some satisfaction on their concerns.
And yeah, and you're right. And that's the, I mean, the area plan and most of our planning documents would not provide that. And you're right. And that's, I mean, the area plan and most of our planning documents would not provide that number, that finite number in feet or in those great details, just because there is, there needs to be some flexibility as this moves forward and defining that based on the, you know, site conditions and current, current conditions. So you're right. I mean, it didn't have that level of detail, but as part of the planning process, that's, that's appropriate for a plan. That's what the code is for. So it's, it is very seemingly sort of subjective at this point, how we're going to try to do that. But our intent is really to try to uphold this as best we can, knowing that we're balancing all those factors. That answer your question, Rebecca?
You have to be smarter than the controls. Yes, that answers the question. Okay. So then, Ms. Roush, if I could, if we could get you to present those charts. I think that what we'll do is if Mr. Supalak had an ingenious approach as far as talking through and asking the questions. Because again, that that's the part of the meeting that we are currently in. And I think we started down that avenue. And thank you, Ms. Fox, again, for verbalizing the, we are trying to honor the integrity of the de-cap discussions that happened earlier in, and if I look back at the the public comment submitted, the highlighted items that almost everyone stressed on were the building height, the setbacks and that landscape buffering. And so as we're looking at that, if we could have our thinking caps on and ensure that we are balancing those items relative to their appropriateness. And I'll use, I'll parrot one of the words that that the public comment used and the proper implementation of those elements.
Yeah, I just mentioned, Ms. Call, that there, there are, there are residents who who do want to give a presentation tonight. So I want to make sure that we don't, during this public comment piece, that they have that opportunity.
Yep. And I want to stress, we are still in that question period. So we're going questions for staff and then we'll turn over time to those members of the public. And we'll have questions for the public and then we will start with our deliberation. All right. So then looking at the item that we have right now, again, this is one of the the sticking items. So this is building height. And Ms. Roush, I think you went through it very, very well, the first iteration. But looking back to the commission, does anyone have questions on specifically building height? Seeing none, Ms. Roush, if we could go to the next item. Now we are setbacks and buffering. So I appreciate it. I know that it is very difficult, especially when a formula is involved, to put staff in a position where where we say, well, what could this be? It's not as black and white as what could this be, because every parcel has different requirements on it. What I would like to look at is just the values here. So if we're looking at the PUD. So Ms. Roush, again, making sure that we are crossing all of the Ts and dotting all of the Is. The chart that you have here, are there any feedback items, any items of consideration for previous discussion that you'd like to highlight? That are not called out in this specific matrix?
Um, I mean, additionally, we did review this based on comments from the residents about, you know, how to provide that buffer, that it wouldn't be in a staggered, excuse me, it would be in a solid row, that there would be staggering, that there would also be, and we've incorporated that in the code, the use of existing vegetation to count towards that requirement so that we're not removing perfectly good trees to then plant newer, smaller trees. So we would be able to use, or an applicant would be able to use that existing tree canopy to help meet that requirement. So we had a lot of discussion about how to do that. So the revised code that you have before you, it does demonstrate the use of that. It does also speak to the staggered row. I think as the code is written now, the ratio at which you would plant trees is is a little different than the residents. And I would want to vet that further with our landscape group because we want to make sure, yes, you can provide a really dense buffer at day one. But in 15, 20 years from now, we don't want these trees competing and killing each other off. So we would want to make sure that we're, we're doing that in a way that's viable for the future. I think from our perspective, that 35 feet would, would allow for us to do that staggered row, particularly if we have to do some additional six-foot opaque screening, mounding makes that more complicated. But I think it can be done. We did have a lot of discussion about that. But our current code doesn't give a minimum width. It's really dependent on the pavement setback. So adding that width in there is a, is a much more restrictive requirement to take to achieve that. So I think that does a good job of that as well. And again, the current code is one to 40 in a single row. So it doesn't really speak to the staggering and providing the layers, I think, that the residents were looking for. The NRI's request, I don't want to speak for Matt, but that, you know, their concern was making sure that they're happy to provide that buffering, but just making sure that 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 impacts their parking and their parking setback and how that, how that all fits together as part of the pieces there, a particular puzzle as a commercial property owner develops.
Thank you, Ms. Roush. Are there any other questions for staff at this time that the commission has? As we mentioned before, the Planning and Zoning Commission has received and reviewed public comments provided in advance of the meeting. I believe we covered those and read anything that was received from midnight to now into the record. We certainly appreciate the public comment on this particular item. Tonight, we're joined by two neighborhood representatives. Ms. Merlina, gave break, gall break, I apologize. If you could help me clarify.
And I think she's actually not on tonight, Mr. Christiansen. So Sven Christiansen, he's here. And then Matt Call is representing NRI. He's here as well.
Got it. So thank you for both of you for joining us this evening.
Good evening. Hi, Rebecca. This is Sven Christiansen. And please correct, Merlina's not here. I'd be happy to defer to let Matthew go first if you'd like.
All right, Mr. Cole, would you like to make a statement or offer some clarity here to the commission this evening?
You're muted, Matt.
Do you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
So NRI and me on behalf of NRI started discussions with the city in August of 2020. From the beginning, NRI's only goal was to maintain some amount of reasonable economic viability for this parcel. And again, I want to reiterate, I know it's been said more than once, but this is the sole undeveloped parcel in the MUR4. And therefore, it has the biggest impact to this parcel and to NRI. We felt from the beginning, we gave, instead of using tactics, NRI gave very clear set of standards on what they could accept within changes to the code, changes in the, for the MUR4 and still maintain any kind of economic viability on it. And we worked really hard for that. There was a point, maybe in October, November, where we thought we had, I won't say a deal, but had come to a mutual understanding. We were, you know, we thought we were inches from having an agreement on, on where we were going to go on setbacks and height and pavement setbacks. And then for whatever reason, that fell apart. It was only after that. And it wasn't just one thing. It was the combination of pavement setbacks, restrictions on height and buffering that those combined, you know, didn't leave much choice. And then it got to a point where we weren't making further progress. And at that point, that's when we made the formal request to be removed from the MUR4 altogether. So we submitted that in January. And what I'm hearing now is we'd have to submit another request, but maybe that can be answered offline.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Any questions for Mr. Cole from the commission at this time? Ms. Roush, can you offer clarity for that consideration item?
Yeah, we can, they have submitted that request previously and we can reuse that same request if they want to be, if they want to use the same statement that they have. We have that in our possession.
Thank you, Ms. Roush. Ms. Fox?
Just, just a question, Mr. Call. You, you said that what, you thought you had an agreement or you thought you'd come to some agreement. But the pavement setback and the width of the buffering was what tipped the scale for you? It wasn't height?
I think that was the last thing, you know, there, when, when we first looked at what was being proposed and there were some, it seemed like the city was willing to make some tweaks to allow flexibility. And that, that was ultimately the biggest thing was it became so restrictive on this lot, what was being proposed and from, you know, whether it was from the Neighborhood Association or the city itself. It just didn't leave any flexibility on what was already, you know, a lot that's not cut in half. But you lose about 30% or 40% of it because of the creek itself. So it, it just didn't become, or became so restrictive that they didn't think they could get anything done if what was being proposed on the other side was, was actually put into place. You know, could we live with less than a 35-foot shore? But not what was being proposed on the other side. And then when you throw in the the pavement setbacks, it was just, they felt undoable. And that's where the request came from.
That, I just ask you this last question. The city did do a exercise in having that site looked at with the recommended, you know, zoning code restrictions. And did you get an opportunity to see that versus what was possible now and what would be possible under the suggested?
Yeah, we're not, so it wasn't ever the position that no development could ever go there. It was a question of whether, you know, there's, there's not a tenant right there. So the property owner wouldn't know what's going to be asked for, right? It just, it didn't leave any flexibility. So yes, there is the possibility of sticking, of putting a building there. But it, it doesn't leave any flexibility depending on who the tenant is going to be, when the property owner doesn't know, know what they're going to ask for or what they need to do. And I can understand why, you know, the suburban office was lacking from the nearby residents' point of view. But what was being proposed just didn't, didn't give much flexibility, if any, at all.
But Mr. Cole, for clarity, when you speak of what was being proposed, are you referring to the city's proposition? So going back to that chart, the city's recommendation for the MUR4? Or are you speaking to Llewellyn Farms Civic Association's request?
I mean, the city's, which was a little bit less restrictive than what Llewellyn Farms was proposing. Yeah, that was the last proposal we got from the city. That was more restricted than, than what NRI felt it, it could live with.
Understood. Thank you for that clarity. Any other questions for Mr. Cole at this time? All right. Now we have a member of the Civic Association here with us this evening. Would you like to make a comment?
I would. Thank you. My name is Sven Christiansen. I'm a Dublin resident at 5765 Settlers Place. And I'm representing the collective questions and concerns of the Llewellyn Farms Homeowners Association, which were submitted earlier this week. And obviously, you heard a few others as well today. And I'll try and be brief tonight because I think there, you guys did a nice job of summarizing a lot of where we are. And then we can hopefully get some good dialogue. Certainly, thank you for serving the city as you do. It's your good and diligent efforts that get us the best for our community. And it's why we seek your assistance this evening. I do apologize for joining from my vehicle, but I'm on vacation and lodging with 14-year-old boys, baseball team at a Cal Ripken tournament in South Carolina. And this is the much quieter place, I'm guaranteed. I last visited with this commission in 2018 to highlight our association's support for the final draft of the Dublin Corporate Area Plan. And our enthusiastic support was because the city leadership, both city council and city planning acknowledged our reasonable requests and highlighted them in the final draft of the de-cap. The MUR4 language Office Suburb District direction is on page 29. I think we've seen that and I've got, if you take a moment, I'll let, a little bit extension, I'll show it to you. It directs the area, differs in character, given its proximity to existing residential. It states the development should be lower office density, max one, two stories. And the de-cap even includes a specific call out that Jenny mentioned, Site 11, that the directly butts residence site should be no taller than two stories with a flat roof and a 1.5 stories with sloped roof. So with all that and that celebration of being in front of you and saying we support it, it is surprising to be back in front of you now strongly opposing the current MUR4 draft code. The draft permits buildings up to 32 feet tall and the buildings even closer to residents than today's existing building. So we expected the, we expect still the, the final version of the MUR4 code will match the important details that are in the de-cap. And I think written in unwritten kind of communication that certainly has taken place over the last five years. Most specifically, the language that was most objectionable to us was creative draft language that said something like buildings, the lesser of two stories or 32 feet in height should be adjust, should be adjusted to something more concrete. It would read something like two-story max and to be no taller than 25 feet. It is definitely true that some of the tier-two requests of the de-cap were accommodated, the landscaping buffer at 35 feet. Jenny's last discussion on understanding, you know, good landscaping, maintenance and potentially staggering the trees to make sure that it's really doing what it was intended to do. That's met with a lot of appreciation and, and the same with some of, you know, we felt maybe some gotcha language that if it abuts a resident, but it's a side lot versus a front lot versus a rear lot, that it would be a proper buffer. So neighborhood appreciates that very much. But despite the, the tier-two request being accommodated, it doesn't really matter at all if the tier-one requests of building height and building setback aren't met. And so from our view, the mayor and the city council agreed to the de-cap after multiple sessions with the businesses and the resident community. The question would be, why should we now allow any business or new city leader to change something already broadly supported and approved? Because the community still wants the prudent planning. It's why we've invested five years in this process and I'm on vacation talking to you from my car. Multiple meetings, letters, discussions with residents have occurred. But in our view, there is no value in all those meetings if the de-cap building height guidance is ignored in the actual zoning when it counts. And you guys had some nice dialogue on that of saying, you know, this is the stage to do it. And so that's why we're still here. Just a couple of context from our view, you know, two-story homes is what we have in our neighborhood. They're all approximately eight-foot ceilings and average, even with the sloped roof, no more than a 25 feet in total height. If we look out our upstairs window, you know, if you're a six-foot-tall person, eight-foot ceiling, one in between, you're probably at about 16 feet looking out. From our view, there's no reason to have a building 32 feet tall and twice the height of the view if you're, if it's a buddy of the neighborhood. As drafted, there's no doubt this would adversely affect the Llewellyn Farms residents in the neighborhood and the value. And so our view, our layman's view, but a view is that even with the 11-foot ceilings, the developer can develop a two-story building under 25 feet with a flat roof. So another thing to consider, people care how close they are to their neighbors. And our neighborhood, the average front door to front door is somewhere about 118 feet. So just give a contextual closeness of what a building would be at 75 feet or at 105 feet if it is less than from front door to front door on the street where you go and traverse with your bicycles and your cars and your strollers every day. So the MIR4 draft today permits 32-foot high. And again, because of the creative language, a likely three-story building, which again, it's not what we, we were promised. And it's, again, it's even closer than than what exists today. The, the only context we have in our neighborhood is the Aspen Energy Building, which is a two-story flat roof building. It exists today. It's approximately 24 feet tall and it has a residential setback today of 130. It exists today. It's approximately twenty-four feet tall and it has a residential setback today of a hundred and thirty-eight feet. So when the neighborhood talked about this and we said, hey, let's get involved in the community and let's make sure that, you know, at the very least, something doesn't change to make it worse for us than what exists today and what we're used to. That was our association is that existing building. So from our view, certainly an association request that nothing to be built closer than seventy-five feet. Again, that would be at a fifteen-foot-high level, but with the setback and expansion, a, a max of a hundred and five feet would be a building that would be twenty-five feet tall. From our view, that's still even closer than the existing building today, but that's kind of making an accommodation to say, well, the residential buffering is there with the landscaping. We are not looking to, we're looking to coexist with the area of the development and the business side. That is important to us to, to reach a deal. And I heard us kind of talk through that. And we, we really do view that what we proposed is fair for all parties involved. So last few things here, the prudent planning that matches the intent of the D cap, in our view again, means that no suburban office development should be taller or closer than something that exists today. The D cap is a large area. And if you think of, you know, east of France Road and west of France Road, the bulk of this is on the west of France Road. And again, because it doesn't abut the neighborhoods, it just doesn't have the same sensitivity. And I think that's why it got called out a lot in the D cap. The community, I was, does appreciate the business developers and the businesses. They do bring important things to us. They've honored our community in so many ways. We see value in them, but we certainly see one of the ways that they can honor us today is to yield to the D cap and the Dublin residents and our neighborhood association. In our analysis, there are significant advantages for developers in the MUR four, even with our suggested revisions, including reduced parking requirements, leading to increased square footages per acre and likely a faster track for approval, something that has been avoided in the past, probably because of the, the stream quarter restrictions, parking numbers restrictions. And so, you know, we do see a win-win in what we proposed. And, and finally, we do understand developer preferences, but in our view, when they're incongruent with the D cap, they should be ignored. You know, the graph that Jenny shows today is really, really helpful to, to getting us to where we need to be. But I would say that it's, it's sort of irrelevant from the standpoint of if it's, if it's varying from the D cap promises, it, it really shouldn't be there. The D cap was the promised standard for the code. And that would include the two stories and the flat roof and such. So what we're requesting, the final MUR four zoning should codify what was in the D cap. And the most concerning, I guess, in this conversation is to even consider allowing a developer to opt out of a multi-year community-approved D cap plan. It really seems disingenuous based on the full community process, the resident involvement, and prior support from our city council representatives to allow something like that to happen. We did submit some really important attachments. And if you permit, I, because I think this tied into the discussion, I'd like to take a second to show some things that I think will give the context and the, and the overall summary. And I know Jenny, which way did you describe is the best way to share? See if I can. This is the one. Tell me if this. Can you see that appropriately?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can I think the most important part of this screen here on one touch is that there were two different variations of zoning code that abutted the neighborhoods, even in this little area that we're talking about. This was the undeveloped spot. And this part here is, you know, the, the taller things are out along France Road. So bundling things in together out of P U Ds is really what puts this at risk and why we really have been active and engaging to try to get special accommodation. This next slide again just shows even from, yeah, the two, the two districts merged together. This one here, again, even in its legacy two thousand and seven use, it really called out the fact that these things are just adjacent to residential areas needed to, to be low density with greater setbacks. And, and I think that's the legacy suburban office was designed based upon their height and their building size, that it really did, it set back the building from the residents. And I know that what's transpired is we explained this to the city and it, it felt like it kind of came back at us to say that, you know, we wanted to have a legacy suburban office stay the same. I think the consensus of everybody was we just expected the plan that was building on something that exists in the past to occur in the new, in the MUR four zoning. We weren't really looking to, again, get something that would be more unfavorable and lose some of the benefits that were promised to us. I think I could skip through most of these. This is just kind of the low office density things that you can see as you walk along our path. This just shows you the, the two-story example of a relatively nondescript blending into the skyline type of building at a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and thirty-eight feet away from our neighborhood setbacks, from residential setbacks today. When we were trying to influence the D cap, we talked about good development that you see along Emerald Parkway today, where this is a neighborhood and this is the only two-story building and it is two-hundred-and-four feet back from the residents' backyards. And we thought that was good prudent planning and we tried to influence the D cap and tried to talk about these things. But they said, when you get to coding is when you put the stuff in there. And so that's what we're trying to do. Even this one-story example still has a hundred and nine-foot setback. If you were to drive through this neighborhood, you can see that these things coexist together because there's this proper distance. The slide here shows the same thing, door-to-door, a hundred and eighteen feet. Again, it seems weird that on this side, you've got this existing building of a hundred and thirty-five feet. You know, two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet is what we would like. And again, a hundred and five feet is where, again, someone's talking about putting a thirty-two-foot building. And, and we're just asking at the seventy-five foot to keep it to fifteen feet. If we scale it up at a hundred and five feet, still closer than this existing building, we just want it to match what exists today. This is current zoning. It just talks about, these are the things that frankly, this has been submitted to you. So you're asking detailed questions about this. This can be reviewed to explain how, you know, now more than fifty percent of a lot nor total gross square footage area can exceed eighty percent of the lot area. So these are some of the restrictions that have existed and part of the reason that the lot has probably been undeveloped. And part of the reason that we think it's a win-win by what we proposed. This was something the city provided that showed kind of how things could work with all the required parking and what the size of the building would be on the legacy zoning. And, you know, from our, again, we would clearly put ourselves in the novice categories. So these are from our perspective of the new ones, somewhat back of the napkin, but I think the city also maybe contributed in part of these. And so we did see, even with some of the new setbacks and building height limitations, we see some, some win-wins. And so feel free to review this on your own, but we thought that was important. This, these screens, I think we talked about here. You know, and this is the D cap of the one-point-five stories and the sloped roof. And this last part, I think, is the visual of what we were just describing earlier. This, this is what was a no-go to us from just, it's higher than the building that's there today. And we're willing to maybe let something go a little bit closer, but we certainly don't want it to be so high that it shadows the backyards. In the winter time, the sunlight won't go through after three o'clock or two o'clock in the afternoon. It'll shade all the residents. And again, these are just things that we're trying not, not to impact the residents. That was the promise in the code. And the amendment one really does break down all the specific asks that we called here and the scalable setback, the details. And a couple of other things here along Bradenton that were important to us because again, that's what the neighbors had expected over the period of time. And we expected that it would be protected in the future and codifying, codifying that language is important. The questions list, I don't think we have time to go through tonight, but I would like the city and this group to talk through these. There are some things that's, in our view, from a resident would say would be gotcha language. With minor projects under ten thousand feet, it might not go through a public process. You can understand how the residents would be concerned if there was something that didn't go through public notification. And let's say that big building we talked about, this twenty-five feet could do a ten-thousand-foot expansion, move closer to us without any public input, that would be really concerning. So we're looking to have codified the things that are really most important to us. And, you know, things like H V A C height and adding to it, you know, those are things that I think should be codified that'll help us. And our goal is to summarize and move on at this point, stop sharing. I mean, obviously in conclusion, we missed the mark today and what was promised on the site, on the, on the height and the setbacks. The zoning permits. The, the zoning currently permits too tall, too close. And you probably experienced in the past where liberal zoning has created problems near residents. And we're just committed upfront to getting it right and we're seeking your help. And so if these changes that we proposed and put in writing were to be incorporating a MUR four, we expect we would quickly approve and support the MUR four plan. And I thank you very much for giving us time this evening. We do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Christiansen. All right. Ms. Roush, just crossing Ts and dotting Is. Has any additional public comment been submitted during the course of the last few talking points?
No additional comments at this time.
All right. Thank you. Are there any further questions for either public individuals who came forward to make statements or for staff at this time? All right. Looking to close the discussion portion and go into deliberation. So looking to the commission. We've had a lot to consider. There's a lot of history here and unfortunately, we don't have all recordings of every discussion, whether informal or formal. So we are left to use our best judgment and the trust that has been vested in us to discuss how to move forward. So looking to the commission for discussion items, for considerations and understanding that this is an informal review, but we are looking to discuss. And Ms. Roush, if you wouldn't mind putting back up some of those items, I, I'd like to see if we can address some of those as a commission CP.
You want me to put the chart back up there or do you want me to include, or you wanting to just talk about the code in general?
I, I think the matrix, those seem to be the sticking points. And so I'd like to see commission anything other. Would you like Jenny to display? I think the matrix is really with those sticking points. And Ms. Fox, to your point earlier, it is the, you know, the promises of the broad strokes versus those fine individual items and making sure that we are balancing property rights. Because that's really what this boils down to. It's the expectations of the residents to enjoy their properties while the expectations of the, the commercial property owners to be able to develop theirs. And that's really what we boil down to. All right. Commission, looking to you, and I will apologize if I do not immediately call on you when you have your hand up and there is a void. It may be because I don't see you when we're in presentation mode. I only see a few of you. So any questions or comments, discussion items on the building height? I believe staff has been in a position that is maybe not the most comfortable position, looking to weigh the commitments made to multiple parties, looking to honor the integrity of a D cap. And certainly I think that we can all agree that this is definitely movement in the right direction away from the suburban office current code. Mr. Subalak, I think you highlighted that earlier. Any discussion on the building height here, the draft M U R four language?
I'd just like to make a, a general comment.
Yes, Mr. Schneer.
Couple of points with respect to the, the exception process for being removed from this consideration, N R I. I assume that's not something that is, that, that we handle at this level. I can be corrected if that's about the case. So I, I think that should be something, while it's relevant to this, if it's not within our purview, then, you know, we, we should not be considering it.
Certainly not for this evening, that, that discussion was not public noticed. So certainly not for this evening.
So you know, the, the elephant in the room is there appears to be some disagreement as to what the various stakeholders understandings were as to what was represented or promised. And we're being asked without any record, ex post facto, to determine that and, and sort of seek justice and equity for all concern. That's not going to happen. I mean, by, by fact, it can't, we, we don't have a record to, to base that on. And I think the closest we have is, you know, is Jane's recollections and, and that our understanding, I think, is that there were no specific promises made with respect to metrics, but just that interest would be protected. So going down a rabbit hole of, tonight of trying to now figure out whether, you know, twenty-two feet or twenty-seven feet or, you know, what sort of ratio should apply, I've got a real, you know, I've got a real problem with it. This is going to be the, the determination we're going to be asked to make tonight. I, I don't think we can. Likewise, I'd want to hear more at a later date from the developer with respect to the economics. I mean, this, like, it's not economic to do this if, if we have to live with this. I'd need more color on that before I could make, you know, any determination with respect to that. So I'm, I'm, you know, I'll listen and participate, but I'm not in a position to make any sort of points of view. And I recognize this is informal, but I think being asked to do a lot at this point in time.
So, Mr. Schneer, if I might offer, as this is an informal review you highlighted, but also as we are looking at the codification of specific language in relation to an area, in relation to a zoning, so M U R four. If we look at that specifically, understanding that every application has history and most of us are not going to be privy to all of any application's history. But if we, Mr. Fishman excluded. But if we look at this specifically, understanding that we have multiple parties interested, that we have some draft language in front of us, that we have adjacent parcels that fall under different zoning currently, that we are dealing with commercial uses, abutting residential uses. And those types of applications we do see on a somewhat regular basis. So if we look at this specifically as a, a proposition to adopt code language, given all those parameters, given that it is abutting residential property, given that we have interested parties who own the commercial parcels, then as a commission, are we in favor of the staff drafted language in relation to building height, density, buffering and, and landscape? I think that makes.
But we also, we also just received, I, I just, you know, we're just looking at this matrix for the first time. And it has significant consequences.
And again, I do think that's one of the reasons why this is an informal review and we're not asked to adopt code at this point in time. So if I could deviate from my norm and if I could offer some opinions, we're on building part height right now. So if we look specifically at the draft code language for M U R four and we look at the previous, the suburban office, that's current code, and we look at the M U R four current code and take into consideration both the N R I request and the Llewellyn Farms Civic Association request. Do we think it's reasonable for the proposed code as reading two stories or twenty-two feet of abutting residential could be increased with height to a setback ratio of one to three, up to thirty-two tall, feet tall max? So my first question to staff would then be, how does this compare to other properties throughout the city where we have relative commercial to residential abutment? How do the setbacks compare and how the heights of the buildings compare?
All great questions. And there is not a lot of examples of where this happens. The Camden Office that Mr. Christiansen mentioned, that is relevant. I don't have the building heights for that. So, and maybe that's part of this discussion tonight is what other additional information do you all need to help make an educated recommendation to us? And I think that's a fair point, is us doing a little more digging on the building height part. So I mean, we've definitely looked at the setbacks, but we would have to pull some records to see, see how those compare in some other comparable situations. But I think that's a very valid, valid.
And I guess from my history, real quick to clarify too, from a history, history perspective, to get to Mr. Schneer's point. I mean, you do have all the case history of when this plan was reviewed by council and the discussion of that, that, that was included in your packet. So if that helps, I mean, it's not every conversation. I, I totally get that, but that at least provides when the plan was reviewed through council and planning commission, you would at least have the benefit of having all that.
That at least provides when the plan was reviewed through council and planning commission, you would at least have the benefit of having all that narrative. And and all the minutes and reference of action of that, that thing, that wasn't included in your packet, so if that helps you at least understand some of that dialogue. Not like you said, it's not everything, but.
So, so to that point, Ms. Roush, if we could offer direction to staff to when this comes back, to pull out. Similar properties throughout the city where zoning has been enacted, what those specific, not just. Code regulations have been, but also implementation, because we do know that across the city, sometimes the code. Requires something, but the particular developer has offered either more or has been granted variances or waivers. Are there other items that the commission is interested in having staff research and bring back, Ms. Fox?
You know, I think, as I mentioned before. This has been going on since about two thousand fifteen, prior to even when I came on council, and there are minutes that that address that, I don't know that they're in this, as Jenny said, not everything's in here.
I just meant not not every discussion that we had with the neighbors.
Right, but.
Minutes should be there.
Yeah, and and I think it's really important, because one of the things that I think is significant about this particular application. And this particular code is the involvement of the neighborhood from the very beginning. If you, if, I mean, I have, I have probably a three inch file of a consistent ask by this neighborhood. For consideration when it comes to protections. And in many instances, as I said before, in the early conversations, there was assurances that that would happen, of course, now we're just down to the nitty gritty of feet, right? But but I think it is important, this is probably, there's probably only been one other neighborhood that I know of that has ever gone to the length. And time of engagement with planning staff as the Llewellyn Farms neighborhood has done, and tried to find a win win situation, if you look at their presentation that Sven has. You will see that they even asked for a consultant to try to show how, by complying with their recommendations or their their ass. That the developer would have thirty two percent more square footage within his building, so I know this takes a long time and it's very complex. But I will say it is worth the effort to really look hard at what their suggestions are and to make a decision as to about whether or not there is a fairness about it. So so I would ask for any and from any conversation that occurred from the beginning of the decap between councils. And the public and the planning department as to what the expectations would were, so that in fairness to the the residents. Who have walked the path that, you know, that the promises are not, you know, altered, that that they are satisfied, so.
And and I do want to stress that. Staff is trying to weigh both both sides of the equation, because there are multiple, whether we want to term them residents or not. But there there are many property owners involved here, and so understanding that that we need to weigh all of those things together. So given that this is an informal discussion, and this will not be the last time we look at this particular issue, are there other items that the commission? Needs to gain better clarity and better understanding of when this is brought back?
Yes, yes. Can you hear me?
Mr. Fishman?
Yes, thank you, I I think that that the history has been that councilmen and and meetings I was at have promised compatibility. To the neighborhood and and a residential feel, I heard that, I've heard that over and over again when it came to Llewellyn Farms and and commercial, this commercial development, so. I I think that I I remember councilman that's not here anymore, that that had a stake in that and 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 talked a lot about that, that. I think that there's so, I think there's a lot of work to do yet to to for for both the developer to have. Something that will work and and the residents to have the the what they, what they've been promised for years and years, and and I do admire the the. They've been very vocal over the years, and 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 we've had a lot, they've had a lot of discussions, so I think that that's what they're promised, interestingly. We talk about flat roofs and height, I can remember that they were, that. One particular councilman had a discussion about the fact that the buildings should be. Lower, but also have pitch roofs to be compatible with the with with the, so that would make the buildings even lower. To be compatible with the residential feel, and I I remember talking, hearing years ago, probably in two thousand fifteen about. That, as I said, compatible residential feel and and much of like it has been built all over Dublin where it it's near residential neighborhoods, so. I'm just giving you general information, and and so I just think, hearing all this and looking at this, I think it's an incredible feat. That 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 our staff is has has performed in in this, and I think that, but I think we've still got ways to go.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Any other specifics that the the commission would like staff to bring back when we look at this in more detail next time?
I'm not going to add any more specifics as much as just double down on context, 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 I think. We, the promise sounds like residential protections, but that is left interpretable. And to the point of if there's, you're right, and to the point of the the. The community is interpreting that as the one building that happens to be out there, which is just a happenstance. Right, that one building wasn't built, clearly wasn't built to the suburban office code. Which means it would fall in excess of other areas in the city, and and so to the point of. Where is a comparable community, where is a comparable situation, what is the comparable residential buffering of some of these, some of these uses? In standard code, the more of those examples. We can get, the more of that context we can get. The better we can. Find the right footing with this one.
Yep, and and just to add some additional details to that, if there have been other discussions, maybe not related specifically to this parcel. But Ms. Fox, I'll look to you and then staff to you, if council, who is ultimately the legislative body. If council has had discussion on what the vision for the community plan for the implementation of similar, if not the exact. Areas, if there has been other discussion that has not directly impacted and therefore minutes associated with. This application or this zoning type, if that has been had, we'd love to have that information. I think at this point, we would rather read a six hundred page packet than make a determination based on a few slides and people's recollection of. Promises and commitments and discussions. All right, so any other comments, discussion items, feedback? Staff, do you have proper direction, do you have any questions on what the commission is looking for in order to. See this the next time and provide some useful comments?
No, I think that's really helpful, and we do have and have some capacity studies that the residents showed that I think we could definitely provide with some narrative next time, so you can sort of see what we were looking at, at least in terms of. Alternative, and that probably warrants some some background, just so you understand what what we were looking at to then maybe help inform you as well. I also have. I did review the questions that the neighbors provided, so maybe as we move forward to that next meeting, because there are some things in here that, again, we weren't trying to. Get anyone and we could clean up that, the language related to the maximum height, and we had had some discussions with the neighbors about. That too, that our intent wasn't that you, if you can have a taller building, that that means in height, that means you get three stories, so. I think we can definitely clarify some of the language, and there's some other items in here that are. Good to for us to take another look at, just to make sure we're being clear, so I think we can prepare that for next time as well. But otherwise, I think we're in good shape, so thank you all for your patience and input, I really appreciate you all helping us navigate this, and thank you to Mr. Cole and Mr. Christiansen for being here and sharing your opinions and collaborating with us this entire time.
And I want to echo that, Mr. Christiansen and Ms. Mr. Cole, we are better prepared, and I think that we work together to come to collaborative and. Mutually pleasing decisions when all parties are involved, so we certainly appreciate the time and the effort and for spending your evening with us tonight. I think we're we're not as close as we'd like to be to making everyone happy in this case, but. We will do our homework, and we will certainly look at making the best decisions for all involved and for the city of Dublin, so we appreciate your time this evening. With that, any questions from either Mr. Cole or Mr. Christiansen before we let you go this evening?
I have one now.
Mr. Cole.
Is there a, will this come back at the at the next? Commission hearing, or is that to be determined?
That would be to be determined, I mean, again, we, since we have everybody engaged in the momentum, and we don't want to delay that unnecessarily, so I need to look at what that agenda looks like for the next one, but we'll make sure we communicate that with plenty of time for everybody.
Okay, thank you.
What what would be, how many more meetings would there be for public input with this group on the next revision of this draft?
Ultimately depends, I mean, every time it comes before either planning commission or council, there'd be an opportunity for for public comment, so. Again, our our goal is not to drag this out, it's really to try to move this along, but I would become with the commission at the next meeting for comfortable recommending approval to city council, I that's to be undetermined at this moment, so. I think if we officially come to some kind of agreement on what would be proposed, then that's a possibility. Knowing how we've reviewed other codes, my guess would be this is going to be back before planning commission probably two, at least two times before they feel comfortable, but I don't want to speak, speak on behalf of everybody. Rebecca, chime in.
You know as well.
And then, and then Jenny, I think it it could be stated by at least leadership and and a couple of others, the last meeting we had was pretty collaborative, which was. Progressive in nature, especially on the on the landscaping buffer, can we be part of the dynamic process of thinking through things and continuing the open? This is something to consider from our view, can we be actively involved and helping finish to shape this up?
Yeah, I mean, we can look at as we move forward with this, and I I have some questions about your question, so I think that will definitely be helpful to understand, just so we're clear moving forward that we're articulating that, and the same for for Mr. Cole and N R I, if there's things that they want to talk through, we're, you know, obviously here to help. Help collaborate and talk through this and understand everybody's perspective.
Thank you, Jenny, thanks everybody.
So thank you, gentlemen, for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
With that, it looks like we are on to communications for this evening, Ms. Roush, does staff any have anything for the commission?
I just had two things to highlight, one, we'll go with the easier one first, so as you mentioned, this is our last virtual meeting, which I think some people are might, Warren might be cheering about. So our our next meeting will be in person, but we will be in our old council chambers, because new council chambers are not quite ready yet for us, so. You'll be in your old seats in your old spot in in our old building here, so that will be that July. So, and then after that, we will be then in the new city hall with all the new equipment and all the. All the bells and whistles that go with that, so, and there'll be some training, which will make sure we provide to everybody so you can understand. How all the equipment works and what what capabilities we have for our meetings in that new setup, so to be determined on the training part, but. Show up at our old city hall building, and we'll make sure that's cleared everyone on the agenda and notices that they know. That's that, are there any questions about that, I have one more thing, but. Okay, and then the third thing is training for boards and commissions, so I believe you should have gotten an email about cornerstone and. A couple of trainings that city council has requested that you all take related to diversity and inclusion, as well as then. The required Ohio ethics training as well, so. You all have an email and a login that you should be able to log into cornerstone through Robin's email and be able to take those trainings. There's concerns or questions, Warren, we can talk offline and help you sort that out. On our end, because I know we've helped with that in the past, so between Nikki and I will will help you with that, but any, to end to anyone else, if you have any issues, you can't log in, you don't remember your password, I mean. We're here to help you, help you sort that out, so.
Right.
And I just want to highlight, I I'm not finding it right now, but I know there's a due date, and I want to say it's clean in August or something, so we have plenty of time, but I I just don't see what that due date is right now.
Okay, so yeah, we'll be, and they will be keeping tabs on who's done it and who hasn't, so there'll be a naughty list if you don't do it, so. I would, I would recommend if you can, sooner rather than later, but again, we're here to help and sort that out, because it is, and they're pretty straightforward, so.
Thank you, Ms. Roush. Any communication from the commission?
Miss.
I I just wanted Jenny to to share about the design review team that the council just approved of. You all have been asking for a very long time to get some architectural expertise, some resources that go to people, so this is pretty exciting, it came around and council approved it, so I would like Jenny to explain it, because she knows the backwards and forwards, probably would do a better job than I.
You're you're on the right track, Jane, you know, so yes, we took to council on Monday a request. But came out of all the meetings that all the board and commission members had with the mayor and the vice mayor at the beginning of the year, and that was the number one request, as as Fox mentioned, the. Providing that level of expertise to the commission and the board members, so we had proposed. A more robust version of what we currently do, so in some, in some instances, we have consultants that help us review projects, and they provide some background information to staff as well as. Our boards and commissions, but we are looking to do that in a more formal way in that we would be employing. Architects that are sort of subject matter experts, whether it's residential, commercial, we already have consultants for historic preservation and landscape architecture, so we will be leveraging those. Consultants to do reviews as part of our review process, they'll be providing reports similar, so we were dipping our toe in the water with the product review for tonight. So that they'll be providing that review, and then the goal would be to have them at the meeting, so that if you have questions. Whether you want their further clarification or expertise, they would be there to answer that for their particular project. In addition to prior to a meeting, if you have questions, you can use them as a resource to help you understand installation of products, general, you know. I mean, anything you would want to know about design or product, they would be able to help us with that, so that would be project specific, we are also then discussing. As part of this, then them providing training to the boards and commissions that they feel relevant, as well as then. Doing sort of a building materials council, if you will, so on a yearly or bi yearly, bi annual basis, they would be looking at building materials that are up and coming. And being able to provide some feedback to the boards and commissions about things that should be considered, so whether that means amending the code to allow some of these, or just providing other options. So that, you know, we know that technology is changing and new things are coming forward, what are things you all should be considering? And again, that's part of individual application review, if there's a new material they haven't discussed, then we would have them review that as well, so. It's a really great opportunity for all of us to feel more equipped and have the right words and vocabulary as we move forward, so. Yes, the council was supportive of that, we are, we're moving forward with the development of that project, it needs to go to the community development committee, I think, to be just vetted to make sure we're. Touching all the all the parts that council has asked us to, but we're on our end moving forward with developing that and and speaking out.
That's great, I knew you'd all be glad to hear that, and I also think it's it's important that that, you know, we convey, or I will convey, the community development committee. That we need real time help, so if we have a question, we want someone that we can call up. So if we have a question, we want someone that we can call up. Or we can, or we can pose the question online, so all all commission members see it before the meeting, because that's the way, I'm I'm sure it has to be done. But but at least we're not arguing over Trespa. We all will know if that's appropriate, we'll have that conversation. Then the last thing I'll mention is, as we look at this de-cap, as we go forward, the de-cap guidelines, council asked at, that I bring back to planning and zoning, one question, and it was about the width of sidewalks and allowing dining space. And as you saw tonight, in Bridge Park, the building was built right up to the very edge of the partial line. And now we're having to offer, we're having to give encroachments onto the public right of way for outdoor dining space. So as we look at the de-cap, which will be the next Bridge Park development or renovation, we we're going to be placing the same kind of uses and doing the same kinds of things. And they wanted me to bring forward to you to discuss how you should be handling these sidewalk widths and allowing outdoor dining. So just food for thought as we go forward. That's it right now, because it's late.
Anything else from the rest of the commission? Any discussion items or communication? Well, ladies and gentlemen, it's always a pleasure. Thank you for spending another Thursday night together, and here's to another one in the books. Thank you. Have a great week, everybody.